Okay, I believe it is 10 o'clock. And so we will start. Would everybody stand? And I've asked Commissioner Jordan to leave some information.
Amen. That's great. Father Lord, we come this morning just thanking you for blessing us to see this day and to be able to come out and conduct the business of the county. Lord, we thank you for every blessing you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for our nation, for our state, and we thank you for this county. We ask now that you'll bless us, Lord, that you make decisions for the citizens of the county that will be in their best interest and bring glory to your name. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I will say to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on our agenda is approval of amendments for the town meeting June 3, 2015. Do I hear any corrections in the amendments as they have been presented?
Does it have one correction on the latest question? Okay, I agree. Frank, I can answer. I'll make a motion to accept the amendments as presented.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second, any concerns or questions?
None.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the amendment approved as presented. Next to approve the agenda, there is a couple of items to make some adjustments on that. If on the old business, if you add a number eight and put Mexico report layer, and of course that was necessitating, on the new business, the numbers change to nine, 10, 11 through 15. Are there any, all adjustments to the amendments? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the agenda as amended, approved as amended. Now, we're really, we're already on item four. Now, we have delegations. First, unites delegations, anyone sign up to speak? None. Okay, unites delegations. This might set a record. Down to number five, administrative reports, and we'll begin with our county managers.
This is for May 22th, June 19th. Report from SASC instructions received on June 3, and it was distributed at that meeting. However, it is on the agenda later during the meeting to discuss her report, as well as a statement from John Zellweger. Following the passing of the budget on June 3, much of June spent in sharing departments understood year-end fiscal closeout, learning more about historic work that's been done on senior center and handling day-to-day issues. I attended several meetings during the month of May on May 26, along with other Gates County employees, and Chair Hoffler participated in the disaster preparedness meeting at the EXC, and also attended the Board of Elections meeting. On May 29, Chair Hoffler gave a guided tour of historic Gate courthouse to Gates for third graders. The tour concluded their year, learning about Gates County history. And we, I was also participating in that tour more as an active listener than anything and the third graders did sent Chair Hoffler thank you letters. On June 3, Chair Hoffler, Commissioner Jordan, Almar Commission, Executive Director Kathy Davidson, Agency on Aging Director Laura Alberika, and I met to discuss funding options and operational questions about a senior center. June 12, I attended the Adult and Aging Task Force meeting, and on June 17, I attended the Essentials of Economic Development class in Rocky Mount to get a better understanding of economic development laws in North Carolina. And I also have been given permission to report that on July 6, Helen Yor will begin work as the Extension Director in the Gates County Department of Extension Office.
What kind of grade or score would you give that courthouse to?
Oh, I'd give it very high. They enjoyed that. Other than them saying it was hot that day, I think they enjoyed it. I think in both of our letters, someone mentioned the not-so-private small showers at the jail house, in the jail facility. They were, I think, very surprised at what jail cells looked like. And one of them told me they learned that they do have to go in jail and sleep on the top bunk. But they all, I think, enjoyed that, and I know the teachers. Even one of the teachers attended that tour, and she said she had never toured the courthouse, and she appreciated what the Hoffler had to say.
And they all, they all were interested in looking at signature doors on the walls, stairs, and papers room, and they asked very good questions. So it was a very pleasant morning. Any other questions for the county manager in her report?
Again, Board of Elections meeting. Would you share with us some of the discussion and content?
Some of it was during closed session, so it would have to be discussed during our closed session.
Any changes coming forward now?
Only what Thomas Hill had reported last time. They had, that was briefly discussed about new members perhaps coming on board July 1st. And at our last meeting, Thomas Hill spoke and said that he had nominated two people to the State Board of Elections, Mr. Witt and Mr. Hankerson. And as far as I know, they were appointed, and today's to be their first day on the board.
Where does that want come from?
It comes from the local parties, and then they have to report it to the state parties, and the State Board of Elections has to approve their recommendations.
And the makeup is determined by the vote in the last electoral election?
Correct. So it's, so it'll be two Republicans and one Democrat. Mr. Sears will still be on board.
During the June 3 meeting, you, Chair Hoffler, myself, Kathy Davidson, Laura Alberika, at that meeting, we talked about getting in contact with the southeast Virginia, I guess, aging task force, and having Ms. Davidson find out whether or not there was legal avenues that they could transfer funds and support from their agency to a Virginia agency. I sent an email to Ms. Davidson, and I have a cell, but at least we could tell her, she's not responding. Do you have any idea why she's not responding or follow up on that? She worked hard on it.
I think I had, I went to the meeting and I asked her, and I believe she had contacted the Director of Saiki's Junior, and they were not in the office at that time. I believe they were, I can't remember if they were at a conference or if they were on vacation. And Ms. Davidson is on vacation this week, so, I mean, I think.
Overlapped.
Overlapped. But certainly she has made contact and is trying to get, you know, contact them and get a response.
Response should be forthcoming.
Right, and she wants everything in writing.
That's.
I went online after the last meeting when we talked about senior center, and looked at, you know, just typed in counties on their websites with pictures and events and senior centers, and some of them are very healthy activities, and some are just what you might call normal, whatever, but was able to look at square footage and programs that they offered, and the number of rooms and all of that stuff. Some were quite elaborate, and I think a few of them were buildings that had been something else at one time, and can be used as senior centers, and then some were named after local blackness. I don't know if they say how much they get, but they were named after people, so.
So we're going to have to jack the ones that seem to?
Absolutely, yeah. It's going to be a little small club, in fact. But anyway, there's a, that gave me some hope that there might be a family or two that might want to do something like that.
Okay, any other questions for the county managers? Okay, finance and tax, I'm sitting in here about some tax, but Ms. Lane?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You received this morning two reports, tax reports. We ended the fiscal year, you know, obviously as of yesterday evening. Thank Lord, she has got to do tax for that, for all hard work, pulling all those numbers and tallying up. You'll see overall, compared to last year, we are, we are higher with the collection rates overall. As we look at the breakdown of real estate, personal property, we're slightly under, but when we look at overall, we look at that 96.02 percent compared to where we were last year this time, 95.77 percent or so. So we, we are pleased with that. You know, having lost two veteran people in the tax department last summer, Lori and I getting on board, moving in that direction, and continuing the good work over named individuals, you know, with those years of service, so we are pleased with that. Also, you'll notice a sizable number for ZLS of our, is that Kias Legal Services? We're pleased with their input so far. They've done much to kind of, I don't say generate that income for delinquent taxes. Speaking of the fiscal year end, as you know, we lost a year yesterday, '04, as of yesterday evening rolled off, so by law, after 10 years, we couldn't, you know, collect those taxes. And that's a general statute, little segment.
Excuse me, do you have a number? Of that rolled off?
We do. I can email that figure to you.
Please.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, approximately 24,000 ballpark there of lost revenue there. That includes DMV bills as well now, and as well as any personal property, business, delinquent. That's, that's a ballpark number, about 24,000 that rolled off the books.
You have, you have a feel for, I mean, it'd be something you could email us, but you have a feel for how much of that was on the bill percentage line?
A good portion of it. Those have been unique, I'll say, to try and, I don't want to say go after those DMV bills, but, you know, through garnishments and some other methods, we have collected a good portion. But I'll say that's at least 75, 80 percent of what we lost, of course, you know, that rolled off the books, the DMV, so.
And of course, that would not be the case anymore because of the letter by State.
That's right. And if you saw paper now, it looks like mopeds are going to fall under the category of having to be licensed, and DMV are going to, you know, they're going to start that billing process with those, those mopeds as well, something new, so.
And is there, in that, let's say the figure is 24,000, there would have been some interest and penalties in that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that 10-year period?
Yeah, overall, you're right, with the interest that would accrue every month, three-quarters of a percent, you know, every month or so, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the collector's report there? Like I said, we're pleased with that number. We're, we're not content, but we're moving forward in that direction where we need to identify delinquent taxes. You know, we, I just mentioned a couple of weeks ago, Lori and I wrote out, we had about 17 accounts that we hadn't received any response on. We just wanted to get, get an eye for what was going on, vacant land. Some of the dwellings were, of course, abandoned, as we might imagine with no one living in. But those, we did tap on some doors and announce ourselves, and, you know, what is the reason, what can we do to help you? Of those, we got about more than half a dozen of responses. People have come in to pay a portion, they've come in to set up payment plans. We understand a portion of those people may be disabled. We want to understand their situation and say that we're here to help. And, you know, one of them had not paid in a good number of years since probably '03, you know, some, some property that no payment at all. So I will say that's, that's a method that we, we will continue every month. We may just print out a batch of delinquent accounts. We've gotten some activity, and we've got some money coming into the office, $500 payment there, $900 payment, $1,200 payment, some payment plans, whereas there's been a response, and people are interested, and they do thank us for coming out. These taxpayers are not maybe always excited to see us, but as we leave, they appreciate the information because the next step is foreclosure. We don't want to go there. That takes the county's time, it takes our time. So I will say that's a new method, a new process that we hope to continue. Every month, print a batch, we made the round trip, visited all the townships, and had a good day, I feel, so. I just wanted to mention that, you know, catch your good phone call, people see us riding out, two ladies were here on my property, but so far, people have been receptive. The taxpayers, they welcome, they appreciate that because they don't want to lose their homes, you know, they're, they're upfront about that.
Okay, come in. I want to interject something here to encourage you. I have a responsibility in my occupation for collections, and a lot of times, people don't have the courage to go check on things or deal with things. And a lot of times, they don't have the funds to take care of, but believe it or not, they are relieved. They really are relieved because they don't want to start the confrontation, they were just going to push it aside, but they are relieved that it's finally been addressed, and they know their circumstances, they've been told what their options are. So when you do that, you're probably, you're helping them do something that they don't have the energy, the courage, or the strength to do on their own. So I want to encourage you to take, have that attitude when you go there, because you're not the bully, you're not the bad person.
Absolutely.
You're helping them work through the situation that they don't, they're not glad that it exists either.
That's right.
So if we take, we take that attitude and that approach to it, we can really do them a lot of help and get a, it's a burden to them.
It is, and you're right about that. A lot of them don't understand that process. Either they've gone through hard times, they've been out of work, or whatever their unique circumstance. We offer a multitude of ways. We give them a business card, please call, come by the office, we shut the door. We're here to help. I mean, we realize you're delinquent, but on the other hand, there is a method, there's a process there that, you know, you, you can exercise tact and a little bit of compassion in that role, and Lori and I certainly, we echo that among the office and when we visit the property. You're absolutely right, Commissioner, that's the way we feel exactly. You get, you get some good response that way, so.
Being encouraged.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, and go ahead.
The Ellis account, I know it kind of off, it's very difficult accounts, but have we got a little bit of idea of where they are, or any response from them?
Yes, sir. There is one account, well, we have three remaining at Ellis. We, I will mention, we did receive billing invoices for the two accounts that were pulled from Ellis, as the commissioners are aware of. We received bills for those. The three that remain, one of those has begun to be, began service by publication, those that are difficult estates, but in the conversations with Ellis, it's not responsive as, as we would like, as, you know, the staff at Zakiis. And keep in mind, that's all Zakiis Legal Services, that's all they do. Mr. Ellis unfortunately is, I would say occupied or diverted on other issues, whether it's closing of house sales in the Edenton area. He seems distracted, I'll say, whereas Zakiis is not, and that number that we see represented every month with the revenue problem is for that reason. Ellis is, you know, consumed with some other tasks, so. That one account out of the three remaining at Ellis is now being utilized, we're using the service by publication. That will continue, but, but no response. I mean, you know, we call, we try and email and keep that open door policy. And it's my understanding, and even in years past, since we've used Ellis, there's been not a difficult or awkward situation, there's just been a lack of open communication. And I suspect that's in part because he does, you know, divorces and some other tasks, I don't want to delve into what he does, but whereas Zakiis is basically specializing in foreclosures. So that's kind of just the one that's been, been announced by service by publication at this time.
You probably know the four, but out of those three accounts, what is the ballpark figure of what county actually has to pay?
I believe it's, it's about $5,200 total of the three accounts, and that's with interest, penalty, we say penalties, but, and some of them being delinquent since 2005. Our older account there, I'll say, no payment activity since 2005. So we're looking at, right at $5,200 of delinquency with those three accounts. I will say, those that we pulled back with, and some of those remaining at Ellis are just vacant land, so, you know, vacant land for our parcels. Actually, all three of them are, aside from a old cottage of some sort of no value, so for the most part, they're all vacant land, as we would call them, not desirable lots by any means, as we might have reviewed in the past.
And those that are bulky owners, aren't they?
They are, you're absolutely.
Air property.
In fact, all three of them are, yeah, with people in Arizona and New York and scattered places, so.
Does that include legal fees as well?
No, that figure does not, no, sir. That's going to, yeah, we should, we should add, probably for each of those accounts, I would anticipate at least $300 bare minimum for each of those, and perhaps it's going to be more than that with the service by publication, based on what Ellis, you know, would submit. That's rather expensive, but $5,200 without any advertising fees or legal service fees.
Does our, does that 10-year, the 10-year clause, well, let's say the eighth year of delinquency, we turn it over to an attorney, and he starts the process. If we start that before the 10th year, does that rule out that rule?
It does not. It does not. We would just forfeit it, even though we would submit it and those would be, demand letters would be sent, it does not cloak, it does not cloak it under any protection, even though it's in foreclosure. We would simply rule out.
So anytime we get a piece of real estate, whether it has property on it or not, even if it's just land in the ninth year, that we should go ahead and take possession as a county, that property before it gets to the 10-year?
Perhaps, although I know the county would not be, you know, under the guise of owning a lot of property in the county, I mean, that is an option. However, I would, I would say you want to be cautious because the county would end up owning some less than desirable property, and then we would, you know, you could seize it and try and sell it. I mean, that would be the ultimate motive, get some revenue generated back in the county, but I would also kind of err on the side of caution, the county would not want to own a lot of, you know, property, but that's, that's one option if we were to be.
As judge citizens sitting out there in the crowd, I wouldn't like the concept of I'll just wait you out and forego my tax bill, and then I start with a clean.
No, no, they just grow up on a year.
Yeah, yeah, just, just one year for each year. That's right, yeah, as we just lost.
So you still have 10-year back.
And keep in mind, when we do begin to collect those taxes, we apply, and the method is, and customer service, try to be on the same page as well, to put it on the overshare. Somebody is coming in and making a $300 payment, put it on that overshare and try to resolve that, and that's the logic behind that. Don't just put it on the newest one, go for that target, and that's a method, you know, we kind of encourage there. Put it on the oldest, and then if you're starting to lose a year, at least you've got your '04, your '05 as much as you can. And don't just look at that, you know, 14 or 15 tax bills that are not there, so yes, sir.
Okay, very informative, and Zakiis has certainly done well this year.
They have, we're pleased. They are very easy to talk to. We're not attorneys, and that process is very meticulous, and they, they explain it so well, they're always available, they've got a full staff. This is last December, and they just gained a wealth of knowledge, so we're pleased. I think that was a good move, and I'll say by the commissioners in the county of, of being on board with Zakiis, so yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Okay, all right. And I just want to also kind of remind everybody, regarding the tax software upgrade, the bills for, will not be on target for the month of July. I just want to say, Warren Curry, I want to thank Warren for being involved in getting that server, in a more, the new tax server in a more usable, friendly status. We've got a backup software, we've got a tape drive mechanism. Right now, we're backing up tape drive and to the external hard drive, and Warren has been instrumental, we appreciate that. We want to not cut the cord, we pro forma our old tax server pending some trial runs that Warren's going to do with that server. In saying that, I just want to, you know, if you get a phone call regarding the tax bills, based on the upgrade, based on the conversion, they won't, they won't hit the July, the month of July. As we move into August, and that's just a reasonable expectation, you know, for us, I just want to mention that, sir, and I appreciate everybody, you know, working with us on that upgrade, and I appreciate it.
I said tax bills will come in August?
They will, yes, ma'am. As we look at that second week, third week, I think that's realistic at this point. We've been happy to do double data entry in the two systems, you know, in the old tax server, what we do for this transition, so that's just a realistic estimate for us at this time, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Personnel and department reports.
Just before you want, we just want to mention, we are planning to have E&amp;R Board meeting today, as laid out.
Yes.
Commissioner, please, am I?
Yes, that's correct. Okay. Did we pull through any, we had some budget amendments, just to clean up the budget at the end of the year?
68 again, I believe?
I believe that's 68 and 69. Well, the budget is at 820, 811. Looks like a building is picking up in the county. Maintenance is in progress. Is there any questions by any department reports that anyone has?
And then Chairman, just for the visitors here today, I'd like to just comment on, you said building is picking up in the county. It looks like the value of construction permitted in the month of May was 914,000. and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, or just under a million dollars, invaluable there.
I do have one departmental question, of all the zoning and planning, under the administrative reports, like I said, completed work on the fourth building. Completed work on administrative portion to be inserted to the zoning warrants to clarify the planning board, board adjustment, and board county commissioners. If you get a little, what does that encompass? What is that clarification, what that's gonna do? Can you address that a little bit?
Yes, Akis. It'd be nice if I'm down here at the podium, so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Yes, we had some legislative updates that were done way in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, that had never been done in the ordinance. So, going through ordinance and updating, with particularly with the board of adjustment, making sure that we're in line with what the general statute decreed and was updated to, and during those years. That information has to go to the planning board, and then it's gonna come to the board, to you guys, for a final disposition. But, yeah, it's just getting us caught up with what was done in the past that had not been done.
In compliance with the general statute, or the general statutes that change?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And we'll see you later in new business of that county plan you're planning.
Yes, ma'am.
In our profile, we have, like, Gates children, and I thought that was a very interesting, for your information, articles of interest, that one in seventeen births in Gates County is still a woman who seems very late through prenatal care. Thirty-five percent of Gates County children live in poverty. One in fifty-three children in Gates County are uninsured. So, I thought some of those were high in statistics, because our future is our children.
The challenge is, how, what we do to correct or improve those figures?
That's right. And certainly, making sure that they know services that are available through DSS and others, that the people who are eligible are receiving those services. That is certainly one thing we can make sure of.
Okay, there's one other thing for the commissioners. The hundred-and-eighth annual conference will be held in Pitt County, August the twentieth through the twenty-third. July the sixteenth is the deadline for early birth registration. Just a reminder, if you'd like to attend, please let us know that so that we can register you and pay your early birth registration.
As far as closest, go up, please, to us. So, okay, any other thing about administrative reports, we'll move on to old business and historic court highs and renovations. County manager, if you'd like to speak with us for one.
You have before you the report from SAS Conservation, and also a short email from John Zellweger with Clear Skates, and he said that they are interested in working with Shelley SAS at SAS Conservation, and they're looking forward to whatever decisions we make today. I also spoke with James Andreas with Andreas Construction this week, in reference to the memo from SAS Conservation. And one of the things that she highlights is the need for some soil testing. There was soil testing completed a couple of years ago, and John Zellweger did send me that report, and I can forward that to you, using that again. However, based upon conversations with Mr. Andreas, he said he feels like there's additional soil testing that needs to be done once he's read this report. The soil testing that was done in the past was not done right next to the building. It was out in the grassy areas, one of them, I believe, that Clear Skates had conducted, was near where the subject tank is located. And at that time, there were also trees that were planted, since then the trees have been removed. But more importantly, Mr. Andreas said he feels like, and he said he believes, if he remembers correctly a conversation with Mr. Zellweger, that soil testing needs to be conducted right up next to the building. So I asked him if that meant in the trenches that's been dug along West Wing, and he said yes, that was what he thought needed to be done, and that was why he thought this memo was referencing. His recommendation is that we have soil testing conducted along, especially along the West Wing, in the trenches that's already been dug by Andreas Construction, but also to go ahead, as referenced in Ms. SAS's memo, she talked about some other structural issues that might be taking place on the east side as well. So, go ahead and do soil testing on that side, all in one fell swoop, so we can determine what needs to take place. He said he feels like that once those results come back, then you can go ahead and just have a discussion about the deterioration, if there's any deterioration of the wood elements as outlined in Ms. SAS's memo, or the footings. He says especially concerning the footings on the West Wing. Those discussions would then lead to further discussions about how to appropriately correct the wall, if it needs to be torn down, if it needs, if it can be rebuilt or restabilized.
And who would be, who would have to do the soil?
We would have to have some, put bids out and get bids to do that.
But certainly, you need to know what you pay up, what that soil can pay up, to do, before you can make a solution, or come up with a solution. Okay, the...
Mr. Preface of my motion, obviously, our work has stopped on the courthouse until this condition of the building is determined. So it appears that in order to move forward to restoration, this would be the next step, is to get soil tested. And at that point, our architects are feeling, which determines whether or not they need to tear the wall down, or they can basically reinforce it and go with it. So I would make the motion actually move forward with having the county manager to submit a request for bids to do soil testing, and then have that turned over to the architects for evaluation.
Okay, a motion has been made to have, to get bids for soil testing in the trenches along the West Wing and the East Wing, so you could include...
I'll vote.
I thought the motion has been made, did I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
Motion's been made, decided in extension.
Chairman, I would, I know, the way the bid process works, you know, there's gonna come in, and they have dollars, they have two hundred, I'd like for us to also take into consideration what we may, from these other people, Zellweger, or whoever it is, have they used them in the past, do they have a history? What do they know about their real reputation? Do they have resumes? Do they have words on paper? And I'd like for us to, once we get those bids in, solicit some opinions from those other parties. Kind of mentioned in that is the SAS.
Well, I would think we might just walk around too, in the beginning, about who is capable for doing it, to begin with. I mean, there were some names, hopefully, but they would...
Of course, of course, you can't select them.
No, you can't select them. But we can make a note of...
So, that, to the information.
Yeah, the bid information. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, all those in favor of releasing bids for soil testing at the historic court highs on the east and west wings, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those. Okay, so the county manager will start that process. Okay, our next item of business is a resolution requesting the North Carolina, the North Carolina General Assembly to challenge the funding formula to increase the number of allotted classroom teacher positions by applying the formula to individual schools and grades rather than to district-wide, and fund these positions by the current budget line. I've asked Commissioner Jordan, I mean Commissioner Owens, to agree with that resolution.
Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly sets forth certain funding formulas for the Department of Public Instruction to apply when funding public education, and whereas the state determines the number of teacher positions allotted to each school district based upon the number of students in each grade. The state determines the student-to-teacher ratio as well. Currently, for kindergarten classes, the student-to-teacher ratio is one to eighteen. Thus, there being, must be one teacher for every eighteen kindergarten students. The state takes the total number of kindergartners in each school district, and then applies the ratio to determine the allotted kindergarten teachers. Since the state applies the ratio in this manner, it appears that the individual schools' needs for teacher positions are often not met, since the student counts vary from school to school. Take, for instance, four schools which have twenty-five kindergarten students in each school in a single school district. When you apply the state-required student-teacher ratio of one to eighteen in this scenario, you will calculate a need for eight teachers. However, when you use the formula the state uses, you would add all of the kindergarten students into a single number equalling one hundred. Next, you would apply the student-teacher ratio and divide one hundred total kindergartners by eighteen students, which equal five point five teachers, when eight teachers are actually needed. This is an example of how the state's funding formula creates a shortfall in teachers' positions. In the past and presently, the counties and local taxpayers have been funding the shortfall of teachers' positions, which cost in the millions of dollars in local tax money. And whereas, currently, the formula for funding classroom teachers is based upon the number of teachers' positions times the average salary plus benefits for each school system. However, the school districts are not given the budget in the amount, they are given a monthly reimbursement for actual expenses, and not enough to cover all positions required based upon the state-determined student-teacher ratio. The amount reimbursed is lower than the budgeted amounts for the teachers' positions. And whereas, the state could cover the shortfall of teachers' positions by applying the funding formula based upon individual schools and grades, instead of only applying one total number for teachers' positions for the entire school district. And whereas, it appears that the money to cover the shortfall of the teachers' positions is already budgeted for the in-state budget, given the unencumbered money remaining after the actual reimbursement amounts are deducted from the budgeted amounts for teachers' positions. And whereas, if the state budgets the teachers' positions, then the state should pay all of the budgeted money necessary to fund these needed positions, and not rely on the local taxpayer to cover the shortfall. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners requests the North Carolina General Assembly to make the necessary revisions to its funding formula to fund the needed teacher positions in the local schools, by applying the formula by individual schools and grades rather than one number for the entire school district, and use the remaining unencumbered budgeted amount to pay for these needed positions, thereby relieving the local taxpayer of this unnecessary burden of funding teachers' positions, which are already budgeted for by the state. Be it furthermore resolved that the clerk to the Board of Gates County Commissioners sends this resolution to Governor Pat McCoy, Senate Leader Phil Berger, House Speaker Tim Moore, and the Gates County delegation, to be signed by Chairman Linda Hockel and Melissa Lawrence, clerk to the board.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Once again, this is a way to make the state pay for the required teacher positions, I mean, the teacher positions that they require us to have. Do I hear a motion to, in support of this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a motion has been made, decided, and any questions?
Chairman, it's no surprise to the state, they know this formula exists, and it benefits them, and thus puts a burden on the county. But our legislators, if they receive a hundred of these resolutions, they'll be forced to act. So I strongly support it.
Yes, and it certainly would help our situation here in Gates County, a great deal. Okay, no further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will sign and put that in the mail. Okay, now, for second addition, the after-hours fees for, fees and fines ordinance.
It was brought to our attention that due to a clerical error, the after-hours fees, which is a hundred dollars an hour for inspections, was left off the fines and fees ordinance that was approved last month. We would like that fee to be added back onto the fines and fees schedule, and we could schedule a public hearing for our block twentieth meeting, because it would be an addition to the ordinance. This fine, this fee has been in existence, I believe, since at least, I was looking, Edgar's left, I believe, he told me the other day, since at least two thousand, and it's been on, two thousand seven, I'm sorry, it's been on the books since two thousand and seven. And it's available for contractors who ask for inspections on the weekends, or for those who ask to live after five o'clock.
Okay, and I think one of the things that has occurred, that was some of the interest in soil, that they have requested, and they, it doesn't, they, they sound to take, if no one is questioning it, because it's been limited, surrounded counties as well.
Well, I think that we do need to differentiate what that fee applies to, but this is strictly for construction, and that sort of thing, not fire inspections, those sort of.
It's for, it was for any inspection in the past, and that's what they...
That was after hours.
That was after hours, and that's what they requested for it to be continued for, any sort of inspection.
I certainly want to see the document, and see how it's written, especially with some of the issues we've come in, that's come for us in the last several months, wherever we're going out doing fire inspections, and we also attach a fee to them, and see how that really is implemented. I don't know, we may want to make some modifications to how it's stated, or be stated in the ordinance.
I have, I have a phone call about this, and I'm sort of surprised, not at the phone call, but I'm surprised that that after-hours ring was out there. It's not something we've talked about in the past.
But it's been on the books.
It's been on the books. And I agree with Sapo that probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's gonna be applied, it's gonna be a commercial situation, probably gonna be a concrete pour, where something had to be adjusted, and the concrete trucks are on the way, or the last two concrete trucks are on the way to pour pad, and, or this contractor is, it's a Friday, and this contractor is going all the way back to shore with his equipment, but if we can get things resolved today, you know, that creates a second trip for the contractor. So, there's, there are scenarios, looking into it a little bit, talking to a building inspector, there are, not our building inspector, but another building inspector, there are scenarios where it benefits the, we'll call it the developer or the owner of the property financially, it benefits the person doing the job, and it is somewhat of an added time constraint on the building inspector to go out there. So, written properly, Commissioner Jordan, I agree, I do want to see it, I just want a photo or something, just because it had been on the books, it might...
a photo or something, just because it had been on the books, it might not have been on the books where we wanted, so I would like to see, we will have a public hearing, am I right?
Correct.
Hopefully, the person who called will come speak to about it. But we certainly want to see it, review it and see if we can put maybe some language if it's not like we want it. Of course, the way it's been on the books was how, the way I heard it on the phone call, was it applied to every situation, not just the one, but it did apply to every situation.
Well, because if you think about from a staff point of view, they work a certain hours a week, but they have to go out after hours, you know, that is above and beyond their regular work, I mean.
Yeah, the word service, when I was talking to the individual, the word service came to my mind before that person mentioned it, mentioned it as well. And what I thought about was, I said, you know, our, our shared department has to extend service to the public at times when they don't want to go.
But it's going to cost us the county to wait, pay in overtime.
I understand.
And that's the other part. If we're going to incur overtime, sometimes it can be beneficial to employee to schedule it, I mean, I'm saying that, you know, that this is something that normally happens, but that's overtime. And so you've got to be careful how you approve that overtime, because you couldn't schedule it, do it at a time when the next work day or the next week.
I think, alluding to the situation, to like concrete, because I had a lengthy discussion with this individual here in county and John Doe is not, he won't pay extra anyway, he's not going to request it for his, you know, for some, it's going to be very isolated and most of the time, I believe, the people who go in to request it are not going to be burdened or alarmed by the revenue.
I think this is people who are coming into the county, they're bringing the crew, they're going to walk, working on the weekend, they get your point, they have something to have to be inspected, they want the inspector to come out so they can continue to work Saturday, maybe Sunday.
Right, yeah.
And because if you look at, I mean, I think that's, it's not, of course, who's building a home is not going to be affected by this. But can we still schedule to have a public hearing so that we can move forward on this?
Chairman, move the whole public hearing on the matter?
And get the motion to us. Do I hear it second?
Yes, my honor.
Okay, a motion has been made, seconded, and held for discussion.
Only in fact, I think we continue to recognize that that cost is incurred by the individual or company in that case.
Okay, additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If you will schedule a public hearing. Okay, number eight is the MESCO report, I believe. We see a familiar face, what was it?
Good morning. I hope y'all had opportunity to read the proposal that I sent you. I tried to be very detailed and lay out some of the potential issues that may be involved with this. Just to give you a brief update, we did look at the six five acre tract over on Cotton Den Road. That tract looks much more promising than the tract that we were on previously. Based on preliminary findings, it looks like it could probably be between thirty thousand and fifty thousand dollars. And we can refine that number some once, once we do the completed test, but that's kind of a range. One thing too, that I call your attention to, that the area that was in the option was just a cleared area and we need to acquire some buffer areas and a couple different ways you can do that, but you didn't get any control. And I think the other, the other big, couple of big issues that we had was, of course, we'll have to run enforcement from the pump station in Honey Pot all the way back over to where Will Lane insects cut in the hood and laying down Will Lane to the back of the property, which is what we're talking about putting, again, pretty consistent. There's two problems with that. One is odor control, which I talked about that a little bit in this letter, and the other one is getting power, and I understand the power was an issue in Honey Pot. So that's some things that we need to look in fairly quickly so you can make some reasonable decisions about the cost. But we have to answer your questions.
I believe I saw it before I played this out, method of reducing the odor.
Yes, sir.
I love it, has to do with the area that loading stations are.
It, what that has to do is there's an aerated pre-treatment with a tank that will go where we're going to discharge into, and then from there go through a sequential back reactor. It'll be basically treated waste that will go into the lagoon and from there we'll chlorinate it just before we spray it. The reason for that is if you take a long enforcement and you allow that to sit in there for a long time and you just go there and put it in the lagoon and then you spray it, as soon as it gets that spray, it was going to add ice and you're going to have water. So that's, that's going to be an added cost associated with this remote site.
Are you familiar, have you ever done any work on Hurford County area for their treatment plant?
I haven't.
Yep. And one of the things, I went about three years ago and took a tool by myself, me and the superintendent, over there and we walked on a boardwalk with rills right over top of the tank and barely smelled it. So I'm a little surprised that that would be, it might be more elaborate than what we're talking about.
Well, I don't know how to get into what part of the treatment, type of training that you walk, but yeah, it's very possible you walk over the top of it and not smell it at all. I mean, that's, that's very common. But one of the problems when you have this law enforcement, particularly when you've got a pump that's coming on and off and it's going to sit there, it might even not even run. And the longer that sewage sits in that line, it comes out of the roof. And as it comes in, it creates hydrogen sulfide gas and that's what, that awful smell is if you smell it, it starts forming. And it's also corrosive.
I know we've, you know, we've focused some of our conversation in the past when we're talking just spray fields. We've talked about this from residents. How far are we talking about the treatment plant being from the resident?
It will be on the backside of the property, which is the way the soil court read is the property that's nearest the houses on Will Lane is the, is the piece that's most suitable for spray. What I'm talking about doing is putting the lagoon and the treatment system on the backside of property and groups. So they'll be as far away from it as we can get it.
Okay, so think about seven houses?
I think that's right.
Okay, additional comments or questions?
Well, I still have a question I'd ask the board. In this new addition to the spray system that we already have, what part of the county, what citizens in the county will just benefit other than the merchants commerce? And just, I'd like to, before the decisions made here to invest more money into this process, I'd like to encourage us to have a public hearing on it, get public comment to realize the expense that we're going to in here for under sixty-five thousand dollars for engineering costs, three hundred thousand dollars to get the fourth main down there plus another hundred fifty-five thousand or a hundred fifty-five thousand for lift station that will be needed and then another couple million dollars to buy the property. All of this is before any construction begins, but it would be a very costly project that not only this generation, but the next generation will be having to pay for for the operation and maintenance of this, this system. And I would like to have it all brought out in transparency so the public knows what's going on before we make such a major investment. And I don't, I always think of the need of the many to be able to go and forth and the need of the few, and I take it as the need of the entire county in versus the need of this merchants commerce project.
Is that a couple billion dollars for the land? I think that's, that's not, I don't think that's a correct figure of that. I've not seen the contract, I think it was somewhere between forty-five hundred and sixty-five thousand acres, something like that, if that much. I'm talking fifty-five acres, that's what costs your land.
That figure was probably incorrect, but we're talking more than fifty-five acres.
About eighty-seven acres is what we're talking, I think. About eighty-seven acres.
Because you're talking about, maybe, is that a retired, about, is it kind of? Commissioner Felton, I would welcome a public hearing on that. I think, I think it'd be a good idea to be transparent and to, but I will say that if you, if you live in Honesville or if you live on the county line near Virginia, it benefits you because of what the potential it brings to the county for development, because every time a services comes, a doctor or a dentist or an eye clinic comes to the county, it benefits you, you live in Corpike because you can do business at home and it benefits you because you have someone else sharing the tax burden of the county on, not just once, but over and over and over. And also, if you live in Corpike or say you live in Uwer and you're tired of driving to Virginia Beach to work and it offers you a job here in county, that is a benefit too. And I welcome the hearing because the public needs to hear that we're being transparent. County needs to hear those comments that I've just made as well as any other comments that are, someone might perceive to be negative, we need, we need to hear those also. And county is their tax dollar that they've been paying for a long time, they even know how it's being spent. And I can tell you that this board has said, and this is the general statement made in closed session, so a general statement I can make here is that we want to correct some things that have happened in the past that maybe the citizens have felt that maybe, maybe they felt that they weren't fully transparent and we want to make sure we don't do those things again. So I would welcome the hearing so that we can hold ourselves true to those comments. And I thank Mr. Felton for bringing that up.
And in addition to, Commissioner Owens, is we also want to make sure that all of our counties are aware, our citizens are aware of what we are talking about. So so often it falls through the cracks and they learn about it happen, so it gives them an opportunity to have that.
Certainly, I think all of us, we want transparency, we want people to know the information that we use based on decisions on, and I think all of us are better off the more that we are transparent. So what do, what actions need to be taken to go? Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, and transparency is something that is obviously what the board should be about and hopefully is. I do remind you that citizens of the county elected this board to provide direction, division for the county and that decisions that are made, certainly, we need to make them for the best interest of the county citizens. And public hearing is not to have this decision made for this board, but it's to hear from the citizens what their added concerns may be. So it does not relieve the board of doing their due diligence and evaluating what is in the best interest of the county. And, you know, we may need to make a decision today whether or not to move forward in addition to hearing. I think that can probably come out in closed session, have closed session discussion. But the moving forward part does not necessarily mean that we're going to go out and buy the land, does not mean that, you know, that this project is complete as a result of that, but it only means that we'll go to the next step. And so I think we need to keep in mind that we do need to provide direction to the county manager and to MESCO as to what the next step will be. These costs that he's presented is basically the engineering cost that will provide the completion of this project.
That's correct.
Even to the design of the.
That's taken.
Exactly.
Yes. Not included anything in the charge of cost.
Right, so in order for us to get to a point where we know whether or not the property is truly feasible, the next step is to do testing, the scientific testing, hydroelectric loading, I believe is what you.
I mean, mostly you would do the same thing that you did on the other property, which would lead to complete testing, yes.
Right, so, you know, that is something that we, we do need to address, that's something that's a responsibility to give to this board and I think we need to make that decision.
And are we going to answer that decision, if not, or are they going to be in closed session?
The vote has been made in open session. If there's more specific questions that relate specifically to that property or to other issues that might need to be discussed in closed session, then you can discuss that then. But we do also need to remember that there are grants that Golden Leaf, I know Emily's been in contact with them, we've been in contact with them. So we have to make a decision one way or the other to let Golden Leaf know what we're going to do so they know how to proceed with their funding, money from Commerce and EDA money.
And it's time for our board to report again.
Yes. And I will also let you know that all the citizens, of course, always come to me and I mean, they come to you, what about this, what about that? I was in a conversation with the economic developer recently who works for the state and he said, if you don't have a store, the chances of getting any of those things are going to fall one way or the other. And because he even directed me to talk to CDBG for infrastructure.
And we'd certainly like to add to Commissioner Jordan's comments about the public hearing concerns, I'd be ready to write on that, but also listeners in the public, we want to hear recommendations made to us for decisions to be made in the MESCO.
I would be pleased to come back and answer any questions the public might have and make a brief presentation of what we're planning to do. I'll be happy to.
But in order to get to that, in order to set your public, we need to have come to a point where they say, this is the situation, we've got this land and this capability, this is the cost, this is the potential uses in long-term benefits to the county, whatever. And, but in order to get there, we've got to let you make a determination now.
So let me make sure I'm understanding you right. What you're asking me to do is to go ahead and authorize the, if y'all have once in agreement, to get soil worked on ahead of time and develop a, a more reasonable cost opinion that we can come back to the board with?
That would be my understanding, because at this point, we cannot consider purchasing or anything because we don't know what the capability of the company.
I mean, you've got a ranch, is what we got from Don's preliminary testing and like I said, it does look more promising than the other site that you were at. But like I said, the, everything is contingent upon the testing that he does.
And this testing is what you are, this.
It's part of this, that you get.
That is what we need to.
But that's not the whole of one hundred and sixty-five thousand?
No, 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 that's part, it's included in there.
And so to continue, to give you a, okay, we continue to get some final, more complete numbers for us and also be able to make a clearer design if we would move forward in the future. Do you know how much, what a dollar, dollar figure Dr. Big?
I think his part is about thirty thousand.
And also, the option on this land does expire in September.
Okay, so we are interested in this property, it is more promising. Okay, so we are interested in this property, it is more promising than anything else we've ever looked at. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, now Chairman, I would, I would make a motion that we occupy MESCO to complete evaluation testing of soil in order to determine its feasibility for submitting a report to the GNC dinner, and at that time present us with a report of the overall cost, kind of we could present to the public board, public hearing. Continue, Chairman.
Okay, you have heard the motion that Commissioner Jordan has made to proceed with the testing on this piece of property, submitted to them, and also a plan, and also that we would have a public hearing to present to our citizens. Do I hear a second?
My chair, you threw in the public hearing comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan said the public hearing.
Well, you know, that won't be ready for public hearing, but, you know, we could have that come back to us before we had scheduled a public hearing.
That might be a good idea, because.
It's not that it's got the bad report.
It's not really.
Okay.
But also realizing that the schedule is highly dependent on what, you know, we ran into this last, I ran into many periods where we couldn't have done the saturation tests and so forth, so it might be better before you set that public hearing, let's get a report in hand, and then we can schedule that.
And I would track that forward. And thank you.
You're trying to do.
But if you are, okay, we've had a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, okay, or is in discussion?
So this would be to move forward in, as far as the next step.
The next step, which would be, right, the soils analysis. This would fall short of the arimony report and that part of it. This is to do the saturation test, the deep wells, the part that we did on the previous days, when we found that it wouldn't work.
And that's covered in your expenses?
Yes, sir.
Already in the pipeline?
Yes, sir.
We've got over thirty-five thousand of them.
Yeah.
But that would be included if we.
It's included, it's part of.
But that, this part would be.
So you haven't lost anything out of that, it's about doing this first.
Certainly, we need information to make a decision. You can't make a good decision if you don't have the information.
We can't, we can't go any further, we can't do permitting or anything.
Not until that.
Get this resolved.
I mean, honestly, until he does his part, I can't even design the spray field, because I have to go with the application, because I'm going to need that before I can go permitting it. But, you know, all he did was a very preliminary report that he, I think I sent to y'all, and so you can see kind of a range of what we were looking at. But he has not done the detailed analysis that we did before. And if you want the detailed analysis before we go to the public hearing, we can certainly do that.
And all that will be available prior to the public hearing?
Yes, sir. And from that, I can develop a pretty accurate copy, and having you some time to look into this power issue and so forth, and see if we can, if it's not biased on that part of it.
Okay, a motion has been on the table, it's been properly seconded, to authorize additional testing at the site that has been mentioned, so that we would have a more detailed analysis.
And I just want to make one other comment, just to be clear myself, and that is, that's pertaining to the grants, this would keep the grants alive and moving until the public hearing?
I think it would give families an indication that we're working towards this, because grants have already been extended, and like he said, there are quarterly reports that have to be completed, so that way we can say we took some action.
And certainly, they would want us to make sure it would be valid aside before.
And we can, we can put all of that in the quarter of the fourth, it's due the end of month, in this one.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, and I'll begin the closing session, you guys speak here first.
Okay, I believe that ends our old business. Our new business is a resolution in favor of grant application for inclusive playground equipment.
The community center would like to apply for what used to be East Carolina Behavioral Health Play Together Construction Grants, and it is to include inclusive playground equipment. The application, a blank application is included, because literally, your will be completing the application. What is required of you is a resolution supporting this, because the playground equipment has to be on county-owned land, and the county does own the community center land. There is a resolution that is included in your packet, they, the center will complete the application and submit this, and I believe, if I remember correctly, there will be offering six, excuse me, eight parts. There would be funding up to eight parts.
Statewide, district?
No, it's for East Carolina Behavioral Health, the area that used to be only East Carolina Behavioral Health.
Sixteen counties?
There's, counties were listed, Beaufort, Vertie, Camden, Craven, Chawan, Curto, Derry, Gates, Fertford High, Jones, Martin, North Hampton, Family Cove, Passapink, for Cleveland, Pitt, Carroll, and Washington.
That's a few more than.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions, I'll take ninety-two of your book. Do we need to read this?
That's up to your discretion.
Commissioner Felton, would you like to read this for the public?
This resolution in favor of grant application for inclusive playground equipment. The motion was made by the Secretary of Defense of adopting the following resolution, and the fund being put to a vote for this was duly adopted. Whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners has in full support of the Gates County Community Center applying for the East Carolina Behavioral Health Play Together Construction Grant to provide funds to be used toward the purchase of inclusive playgrounds and/or playground equipment, and whereas the purpose of these grant funds is to provide monies to the Gates County Community Center to improve the playground space for children by adding additional playground equipment that is inclusive of all children, and whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of physical activity, outdoor recreation, and social interaction for all children in Gates County, and whereas all playground equipment funded by the inclusive playground equipment grant will be located on Gates County property, and whereas the Gates County Community Center has responsibilities for the administration of the grant, including the necessary guidelines and procedures governing the application for funding assistance according to the East Carolina Behavioral Health, and now therefore be it resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its support for the East Carolina Behavioral Health Play Together Construction Grant Application for the inclusive playgrounds and/or playground equipment adopted today. And now Chairman, I will make the motion that we endorse this.
Okay, a motion's been made, and do I hear a second?
I'll second that, I'm sure.
Certainly, and we would like every child to be able to take advantage of a playground. Any discussion?
All right, this comment, I know Lou's not here, but since East Carolina Behavioral Health is now a non-existent entity, I guess this is carried for what?
From what we understand, because this was submitted in June, she received it in June, and they knew at that time they were, technically already marched on paper, and that their name was Trillium, but they received this in June.
And Chairman Jordan, I, through our county manager and all of you, I've simply let East Carolina Behavioral Health, and that has changed as of this month to Trillium, and it is the same, same board members, same objectives.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so resolution will approve, and we will sign that later in this meeting. Okay, number ten, Cameron Land Use Steering Committee, Miss Beck, please.
As part of the packet, should it receive a potential member for the Cameron Land Use Plan Committee? This is a committee that we talked about last month at the last hearing, last meeting, rather, when Mr. Holland came in and discussed the Cameron Land Use Plan with you guys. This is part of the citizen's participation portion of the project, and again, you have my, and these are just my recommendations, feel free, we can add people, move people, however you guys want to do it. At that time, at last meeting, we did decide that we were going to do between seven and nine members of the court group, and these will be the voting members. Again, the meetings will be open to the public, and we will solicit public participation at all meetings, but when it comes down to actually voting and making a recommendation on what actually goes into the plan, these will be the individuals that say yes or no as to how the plan is going to look.
I do have a concern. As I look at this court group, I think it's very bureaucratic. Most of all these are people who work for the county. It's not, I mean, they live in the county, yes, they are citizens of the county, but I don't think we should have so many people that are part of the county government or settle boards. I have no problem with them being on ad hoc committee, but I do think it should be more community-based people. That's just my thoughts.
I agree with Hoppa, and also, we have a large timber industry in the county, and I think someone representing the forestry service should be on that. They don't have to work for the county, they work for the state, but I think a forestry representative should be included on that. I think at least one or two of our farmers, and I'm talking about large landowners, farmers should be on it. They, whatever this land use is, is going to affect them probably more individually than most of us. I think at least those two, those two areas should be represented on this.
And I encourage, I mean, this is, this is just my recommendation to you guys, yeah, you guys are the ones that have to form this committee. Anybody that y'all want to put on it, that's, that's fine. Just give me the names, and we can, we can go from there. Or y'all can contact them, and after y'all contact them, or, and put them on the committee, just give me their names and contact information, and I'll talk with them about the meetings. Again, you know, this, with this plan, we are on a time-sensitive kind of schedule. We are scheduled to have, with the, with the money that we allocated and the contract we signed, we're, we're due to have this plan finished in November. So I was just trying to give you some names, so that we could speak the process along. But whoever y'all want to put, again, you guys decided to make it between seven and nine people, so whoever y'all want to add, subtract, that is completely up to y'all. It was just a suggestion, miss.
I might add to Commissioner Felton, list of large land, timber industry owners, farmers, large farmers, but also our small landowners, citizens who may not be considered that prominent, we certainly want them on there as well, so that their voice will be heard. And I suggest that we bring, right now you have five court groups who are in some part of the government agencies of the county, and that leaves four other names. See Wade Ashburn as a citizen, but it leaves room for, well, actually, you're going to have five citizens to four. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, no, you have five already on government boards, so you're going to have four left, so you're going to have three more opening. I think we should solicit others in those categories, possibly bring some names back. I would, I noticed that these were, are these appointments that you made, in other words, you contacted these individuals to see if they were served.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, for the county, I think we would need to get them to put in an application to serve on the board, therefore we have to solicit citizens to fill out this application, and basically, you know, put some information about them, and we can come back and decide, you know, which ones we want to put up there. I'm not sure, as I think of some of the large landowners, I have a few, farmers, a few names in mind, I don't know if they even want to serve on, to be truthful, I think they may, or may not, but certainly contact and ask them if they'll put in an application, and we can go from there.
I'm looking at this list, you have two from conservation, I think that's, and I understand, I would think maybe one of those could be on the ad hoc as well, but in our meeting last month, we, I have my notes from last month, we asked for geographic diversity. This is not geographically diverse. There's only one from our side of the county.
I don't remember that discussion during, so over the weekend.
Well, I took the notes, I mean, my notes, and I think I commented, maybe, this plan affects the whole county, and it should be people on it from both sides of the county, north side, east west, whatever you want to call it, but it is, and I'm sensitive about our area, Commissioner Jordan, and we only have one side, one person.
Well, I guess a question would be, back in how much time do we have, based on your time schedule, to get some additional names to you?
I would say I would need them, need them by next meeting, or.
Oh, we have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, next week, yeah, so, because we were set, we set to start meeting in July, so we need to, we need to run this.
Mr. Adista, if I may, it would, if you have time today, or soon, some of us probably have some names in mind, such as Vandy Lane, Roger Lane, who also may have names of smaller farms that might, so we can give you a list of names like that if you have time.
Well, if y'all could just contact them and have them, to like, you know, tell them to get in contact with Melissa to do an application, or go on the county website to do an application, and then we can just put it on y'all's next agenda, that'll be fine as well.
That's such a, we are a new board of four, do we have to advertise on paper? I think we can put that.
We already have an ad for work anyway, so we don't have to put it in that public hearing, but we can do it, and it doesn't say that it has to be advertised for two weeks either for committees.
Well, we can make a performance.
Yeah, because this is a board that will be relieved, yeah, relieved after, it's not a permanent board. It'll be relieved after the plan is completed.
Because, I think, if you can correct me anyone, because on our website, we have a form that's up there all the time, that says if you're interested in serving on a committee or board, you know, click the slot, fill out applications, and because that's a permanent fixture on our website, and because this is a committee that's going to be relieved in six months, or November, whatever we're talking about here, I don't know if we have to have a, have a here, would you? I mean, a public announcement, other than on the website?
No, we can, I mean, we can put it on the website if you want us to. No, we can, I mean, we can put it on the website if you want us to, we can send the little blurb, they can, they can put it in the newspaper typically, I believe they'll run that on the board, right, but thank you, and that's no cost.
And we can say, in that, we can say the closing for applications, and just give that date, and we need it really quick.
But we can appoint a committee, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we need to know who's willing.
Yeah, I know, absolutely.
And I think that it, I know it should go out, in all fairness, you know, maybe someone out there says, well, I didn't know that. But if you put that blurb out there, citizens know they have an opportunity to feel quite, you know, that's, that's good.
So do we want to direct the county manager or the county board to contact, how do you go, put a blurb in the index?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, we make the announcement in the local county, that's on the website, that citizens need to serve on this committee, Kamala Land use, or what the name would be for this committee, or something.
Okay, a motion has been made, can I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been duly recognized, Ms. Baptiste.
There's also some comment made at that meeting about having a little bit larger number than nine. Because of what we see here in front of us today, does anybody feel like, as soon as we start talking landowners, we've named four really quick, and Commissioner Jordan's commenting about some not-so-large landowners, do we need to increase the size of both, members of both?
I think that would be good.
It's, it was going to be nine, we need a odd number, I think, do we need to, would you be in favor of eleven? This is just a discussion.
Because you have already asked these people. Yeah, I'd say maybe about twelve. Now, you don't want too big of a board.
Yeah, I think it's, putting the coordinator for this, I think we've come to a point that the most effective board is at seventy-nine, not that you couldn't have a larger one, but the most effective. For how long?
When you get into a larger board, then you have to worry about a quorum and how many people, I mean, if all eleven, I mean, if a quorum is going to show up all the time, then it's fine. I mean, when you get into a larger number, then it's like, do you really need seven or eight to show up to have a quorum? You know, with seven to nine, you need like four, like four or five, so, I mean, it's just, it's just semantics, I mean, if y'all want to do eleven, because I knew, I remember that from the last meeting, that y'all did agree seven to nine, but if y'all want to do eleven, that's fine.
Well, in your transmittal summary, she said, this is a list of potential members.
Yes, ma'am.
So these are not confirmed members?
No, ma'am, they're not confirmed until y'all vote on them.
She's made the chief's contact, and then when they have all said yes or no.
Yes.
Okay. So we could change them?
Yeah.
And I do stand on my first statement, I just think there's too many people that are in the bureaucracy of the county. I think we need just citizens and more to have a voice. Well, we'll come up, we've had a motion on the...
Yeah, well, we haven't voted on a motion yet.
Do you want to put up some...
I think my motion was that we would put an advertising for additional applications to serve on the board with consideration of possibly eleven members. We don't have to go there, but, and then we may not really need that, because, you know, we can make that decision once we, we get the name, and see how many, because we may not get that many names. So anyway, so something to think about at a later date.
Okay.
But motions may have to be.
Yeah, it was just a matter of discussion, I would ask the chairman to call the question.
Okay, the question before, so the motion for us is to, to advertise in the county index for additional members to the Kamala core group, and have a deadline prior to our next meeting, ninth meeting, which is on June the, July twentieth. Okay, up to potential eleven members on that board could be blessed.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with adding that.
Okay, well, I...
Then say motion.
Okay. Okay, I think we have the motion. All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
All those in place. Okay, so we will advertise, put a notice in the paper, and we'll take this up again in July, on July twentieth. Okay, next is... Okay, this is FYI by GIS status, which is number eleven on our agenda. Ms. Baptiste, would you like to speak to this?
On May twenty-seventh, Kathy Lane and I went to Currituck County GIS department to get a little bit of insight into how we can fix, or what we, what direction we need to go in with our GIS system. What, what Currituck is doing is, it is truly, truly far superior than what we are doing with our GIS system. To catch up with what they're doing, it will probably take ten to, ten to fifteen years to even get to where they are right now. They're working on a system where they have a GIS person doing landslips and updates instantaneous. The landslips are available online instantly, however, the data for the parcel is not available until it is batched that night and placed online the next day. For us to get to that point, it would, it would be a long time. But they did give us some valuable insight and suggestions on getting our system taken care of, and we did obtain some names of some firms that they, that they have worked with, that have a good, really good reputation in GIS, and that could probably be able to get all of our data from, from the register of deeds and compare it with what is currently on the GIS and updated. So we do, we did manage to get some names. I'm trying to figure out what direction y'all want to go in, if y'all want to further pursue one of these companies that we, we obtained the name from, or do y'all want to do public request for proposals to get the system redone? Well, not, not redone, but updated.
Why is it larger?
Ballpark figure, and I know you may not know what it's up to be here, what would current payment for our current GIS contract?
Yes, sir, seventy-two hundred a year for Atlas, and I will say that's a very minimal amount.
Yes.
For the updates, updating GIS, and also updating attached cards as well, that's included in that price, yes, sir.
And potentially, you have an idea of what, I know the current large counties we are, what their current cost is to support that system?
They're self-supporting, so whatever, yeah, they're self-supporting. She does all the online, she does all, all the online, all the internal system updating and transmits to, the transmission goes back and forth between the tax apartment, totally internal, so it's her salary, whatever. I mean, you know, making updates on GIS and, you know, the GIS licensing and stuff like that, that's all, that's external, but they are, they are totally internal.
But she, she does not have a price for if a company was to come in, that's what I believe you were asking for.
Yeah, before we can, before we can do it internally, we need the company to come in and straighten everything out, because somebody internal would not have the time to go through all the land records that we have, all the register of deeds, all the tax information, and get all of it straightened. That's, that would be, for one person, that would probably be like a two to three-year project of doing just that, not, and that, that's not including the daily stuff or the monthly stuff that we are getting you all the time.
So after that's updated, we're talking about making a sacrifice for that, that's the minimum?
Once we have, once we have everything updated, and we, if we're going to, if we take it over and do it internally as we should, then we're good.
And then just a person to run the system. But the question is, how much would it cost to get to the point where we get our everything coordinated, that we could do it internally? And I guess that's what you're asking us, if we want you to pursue a...
What about the license, I mean, the GIS, GIS system itself, it's, it's a licensed program.
I have a license.
You have license operating?
Can I get purchase that, prior to my arrival?
I don't know. We own one, one internal license, that is not, that is, the license that I have is completely separate and completely different than the license we would need to operate externally on a website. I have a license to do whatever on my system, that's it.
Is it a license or certification?
It's a light, it's a, it's a software license, not a educational license, this one.
So we need to, we want cost proposals to come in and update the GIS as it currently stands?
Yes.
To coordinate between tax department, register of deeds.
And possibly, you know, and to, to take, to get our, it would be to get all of parcel and tax information updated, update our entire online system as it exists now, and get it prepped and ready for someone to come in internally and take it over.
Okay, so what you're asking is to get approval from us to prepare a...
Request for proposal.
Yeah.
Or, or contact the two companies that I already have, either one.
To get some cost figures.
Yes.
Okay, you, I've heard what Ms. Baptiste is, is looking for, to get a, some just cost analysis of what it would take to do this, because we have had concerns with Atlas being not prompt in updating GIS, and when people go off and clap, they think that they're correct, and it's not correct.
These two companies you're speaking of are recommended by Currituck?
There are individuals that they have, one company I know for sure is someone that they have worked with, another one is a company that she knew about, and I have not contacted them to see if they would want to come out, or what they would need, what kind of information they would need to prepare a packet.
Did Currituck have to go through this process to begin with, or did they start from the beginning and get the internal?
I believe, I believe she told us that they had, they were working with somebody, and eventually they did wean off of an external vendor providing the service, and brought it internal, but she, it was many years ago, because I think they, she said that they had been doing internal between like five and ten, five to seven years.
But this is not someone they worked with, the name she gave you is not someone she had worked with.
One company was somebody that she had worked with. The other one she knew by reputation.
Something we definitely need to get done, the company we've been working with is unsatisfied. I'm going to add my motion to override, I may sort of demonstrate to issue a request proposal, we'll be updating our current GIS, sort of actual property design that's in the county.
And I can have that, I can have that ready for your next meeting, just a draft proposal, before it's actually issued.
And I second that, buddy.
Okay, a motion has been made to request for proposals to update our GSR, the direct, our planning director to seek bids for that. Any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those, we will report in hearing from you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item on new business is, and gentlemen might need to stay up here, ordinance regulates solar farms, as all of you are aware, there's been a lot of activity in the county concerning solar farms, and certainly some of us have attended meetings concerned that, background information, and I think we are concerned, is the county prepared in that ordinance concerning solar farms?
Thank you.
Yes.
Could I ask for five minutes, please?
Yes, you may. Okay, we'll reconvene at twelve noon, high noon. Okay, if you, we'll thank y'all for sticking with us. We are now going to item number twelve, ordinance regulating solar farms, certainly there's been a lot of activity in the county, and certainly we want to, our citizens to be protected, and also, Ms. Baptiste, what type of ordinance do we have in relation to solar farms, about buffer zones, concerns from all neighboring landowners?
Also, also, solar farms are currently done as a special use permit, so they go through the special use permit process, which entails that they, we advertise, they submit an application, we advertise in the newspaper, and we contact all adjacent property owners, one deep surrounding the property, and that is standard process for all applications, that we only contact neighboring, surrounding property owners one deep that is in the ordinance.
Okay.
And we hold, we help, we schedule the meeting for Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment conducts a public hearing. The advertisement is running the newspaper two times, it cannot be more than twenty-one days, and no less than ten days before the meeting, the scheduled meeting.
And if I may, in section seven point two of our ordinance, it says note twelve is solar farms?
Okay, I have my plan.
Okay, and it does say you asked about a buffer, a fifty-foot planing buffer should be required of solar farms along all sides, except that the roadway front of any solar farm shall have a permanent farm installed, so it fully string the facility from being by the public right of way.
And which note is that?
Note twelve, there are no page numbers.
And did you say fifty or one hundred fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Now, there is a one hundred foot setback from the right of way if the solar farm, solar farm fronts a United States highway or a federal aid highway.
What is the, what is the change then, does it change if that was the situation?
It's a hundred foot setback, if they... It's a hundred foot setback if they are a federal highway or a U S highway.
So, seven point two and note, note twelve. I have note eleven, didn't I go?
This was... That's been recently added and may, you may not, it's probably after...
Okay, so note twelve.
This was revised, Jennifer, uh, updated all of this and revised with the date of January seventh of two thousand fifteen and it's online.
And you have the hundred foot buffer...
Hundred foot setback.
Setback, um, where it frontage...
On the U S highway or a federal aid highway.
U S highway. What the, okay, what about secondary road?
Is that, is that an agreement on page nine six?
That is from the past, we're taking that, that ass, Captain Davidson, to support.
On the secondary road, um, there is no, there's no buffer that is that wide. However, if the property is bordered by residential development, then on those residential development sites, then we require fifty feet buffer, a fifty-foot buffer. Um, if it's on side of the property, the normal setbacks would be twenty feet in. But if it's adjoining a residential, then it goes to fifty foot, it goes to fifty foot.
So if residential is a fifty foot?
Yes, ma'am. Now, I can say, I mean, with any special use permit, the board of adjustment does have the leeway to add additional conditions to, um, a special use permit that as they see fit. For example, we have one that's coming up, uh, this month and my recommendation is to add, um, something that we don't do currently or have not done in the past, but add stream buffers. Because this property has streams on the property. Um, we have yet to determine whether they're intermittent streams, perennial streams, or whatever.
What they would be wetlands, wouldn't they?
Well, they do have some wetlands on there, but even though, it just depends on the kind of stream that it is. If it's a year-round stream, that stays wet, or one day it only gets wet when it, during certain rainy days. I mean, there are several factors that go into determining the wetlands. And that's something that we have to determine with the on record visitors.
I thought I said wetlands are certainly regulated by the government.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, but in addition to whatever the on record, um, requires or in anticipation of what they require, because if they require a larger buffer, then of course we're going to go with the larger buffer. Um, but just to put something down on paper so that they are aware that we are looking for them to have a buffer, um, against the streams, I, you know, I put it into the recommendation. And that, yeah, that has yet to be approved by the board of adjustment, whether they're going to accept that recommendation or not.
Before it comes to this board?
It doesn't come to this board. Board of adjustment is final. Yes, sir.
Superior court.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and that's, you know, certainly we want, you know, to protect all citizens and, you know, we, there is this solar farm that is proposed of a thousand acres.
Fifteen hundred, yes, ma'am.
Uh, and that is, certainly has an impact on a lot of residential people that have homes nearby, plus the impact on wildlife, plus the impact, um, in numerous ways. And so I think that we need to make sure that we have everything in mind and prepared so that we protect all citizens and, um. If you notice in the information that Pasquetank, because this has been a discussion not only in Gates County, Pasquetank, Chalona, all of them counties are running. Um, and one of the things that, in one of my meetings that I attended, uh, we had the professor from the United, uh, N C State who did, built the solar home by our estate, solar heist, come to talk to us. Um, and, you know, he said, you know, you need to be prepared. And one of the things is that most of these are being, land is being leased.
Yes.
Uh, and it's been, the lease is what, approximately twenty years?
It can vary, um, between whatever the company decides and the landowner. Um, typically fifteen, typically fifteen to, I've seen some that went from fifteen to about thirty, thirty-five.
And the, um, the equipment generally lasts about twenty years, panels, before they would have to be replaced. Uh, they, one of the things they were concerned about, that the landowner or, or, not even Pasquetank, they have in that ordinance, um, statement, that solar farm facilities will, shall be removed at the owner's expense within one hundred and eighty days of a determination by the zoning administrator that the facility is no longer being maintained in an applicable state to be repaired. You know, the concern is what happens if the company goes bankrupt? Or there's, you know, after twenty years, the panels are shot, they move on, what the landowners left with what? A, a thousand acres of panels that are, that they have, I mean, the plant is useless unless those panels are removed. Do we have anything to protect our citizens?
Um, no.
Okay, we need to make them aware that they need to have in their lease agreement or...
Or their contract.
Contract.
And that is, that's where it becomes a little bit tricky. Um, because getting into private, put, private make leases like that and putting conditions on private leases, um...
Excuse me, we don't need to get into these people's business. What we need to do is we need to develop the ordinance and everybody functions and operates by the ordinance. Now, the verbiage that Ms. Hopford just raised is, is good, is good verbiage. We just need to get that into the ordinance and, um...
Well, she was asking about whether there's something in the, in the lease...
In the current ordinance to protect, I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you said, is there something in the current lease that...
No, in our current ordinance.
Okay, no, um, but I mean, in realistic, I mean, we need to, we need to expand on that for certain things throughout our ordinance. If a business comes in and put up a building and they abandon the building as well. I mean, I understand what you're saying about like with the panels and...
Well, now, a building can be used for repurposed.
But if...
These solar panels are not going to be repurposed if they are in shock.
But if a building goes dilapidated, that's what I'm speaking of as well.
Well, I think the issue for us right now is solar farms. And the concern, when you have large acreage, what, fifteen hundred acres, you have large acreage, you know, that's one of the, I have a vision, they're wa, they're walking away instead of making the, um, improvements, because right now there is incentives out there to build and to construct these sites. The legislature is already talking about ending those incentives in the very near future. You know, we need to think, we need to be proactive, not reactionary. And right now, we're almost at the reactionary stage.
No, I think if you're, the ordinance makes a good point, we need it in the ordinance, and ordinance is the law. When they move, if we've gotten in our ordinance that they have to move their panels within a hundred and eighty days, all of a sudden, we can authorize, uh, our shared department or county attorney to give them a contact and let them know there's repurposed. And what's in an ordinance also, if the landlord's going to lease to these companies, they have to be aware that, hey, I need to put something in my lease because if, if they don't move, the county's coming after me and guess what, they're going to attach a lien to my property. We get it moved and we have to do so. So I think the ordinance is, that's our law, that's our, what we have in order to enforce, uh, what we want done. And if we can get that in the ordinance, I think that will, especially this statement and some of the other statements about the U L listing and all that, you know, that may be something we want to consider as well.
And in addition, uh, when it comes before the planning board, it might be a good time to suggest to that potential landowner or operator for that to be put in the contract to go from time concluding the ordinance. Therefore, it will be in every contract and each and every person after that would see that.
But it is the law.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you see any difficulty in that being a part of the planning board, Ms. Baptiste?
Board of adjustment, I would have to talk to the county attorney to see what, what would, if we can legally, how, you know, how far we can get into private contract.
We can, we can, we can, we can, but we can have an ordinance in the county that requires that these facilities, uh, if they are abandoned, that they remove the...
She's recommend, she's saying that however, that she's going to check to make sure it's okay that the board of adjustment make a recommendation that you have that in your lease contract between you and the solar company. That's what she is, that's what...
He's going to tell you, he's going to tell you, no. You can't, you can only affect what I'm doing through, through an ordinance. You can't do anything that requires me to put something in contract between me and another party.
No, no, she was asking, she could, if they could make the recommendation. Correct.
And that's, you know, the landowner needs to be aware that there are ordinances regulating solar farms. And if I'm aware of an ordinance regulating a solar farm that has this landowner, I'm going to be vigilant, make sure that I'm not in a position to violate that, that ordinance. I think it's, it's kind of, kind of, kind of picked up itself, uh, because most landowners, you're going to sell property, you know what the ordinances are, you know, if you're going to lease it or whatever.
Yeah, and when they, when they do their, when they do their, um, special use application, they do get a copy of, because they need to, like, give them a copy of what the conditions will be to say, okay, this is in the ordinance, even if, um, this is something that's not going to change. Um, the fifty-foot buffer, the one hundred foot, you know, that's not going to change. The board of adjustment may add to it, but they can't take away because this is what the ordinance is. Um, so, because I'm, I mean, I can't, I think I'm, I think I got confused because of what... Mr. Freeman, I think what he was saying, you, were you saying that you just wanted them to have the copy of the ordinance as an addendum to the lease, not put into, not put in the lease, right?
For them to be aware of that and if they want to take that in contract.
Okay, because when you said it first time, I thought you were saying, put into the lease, put into the lease.
Let me, let me say, when you, when you have a document that's fifty pages and you draw my attention to one piece of that document, and then later on, on page twelve, you did bring my attention to something, you just created a liability situation. Because then I, then my lawyer and I say, why didn't you tell me about this? You only told me about this, this footnote right here in this document. When somebody's leasing land, buying land, they're going to have an attorney that's going to give them advice. He's going to instruct them what to do. All we need to do is we just need to develop our ordinance, put it on our website and maybe have something up there, uh, a document that says solar farms. And if a ci, a citizen is interested in doing that, if we miss one person and don't give them that advice, it can be, you got to be careful when you're giving advice. We, and we, I, I can't think of a situation where we need to be advising somebody who's going to have an attorney anyway, how to draw up that contract. If, for that matter, attorney's not going to appreciate it. We don't need to get in that kind of business, is, is what I'm saying. We need to develop, we need to glean from other ordinances what's important to our citizens. Setbacks, buffers, all of that. And let our, whoever's going to vote on it, prove it, present it, have a vote here, and then move to the next thing. We, I, we don't need to get caught up in, in leases, is my professional opinion.
No, and, and that's not my, was not my point. My point is that we need to make sure that we have a legal, I mean, that we have in our ordinance about what happens when a, the solar farm is abandoned.
I don't think we, we don't need to worry for that, that's it.
Stress the action that you bring us.
Yeah, okay, have to go before the planning board.
Okay.
And I'll be the third Tuesday. Yeah, it's not going to be this Tuesday, I mean, this not, it'll be next month, you know. Because...
Why? Why not this month?
Because, I mean, I can try, I mean, I can try to get it ready, but I don't know if I will be able to get it ready.
Well, let's try.
I can try.
Thank you.
And then usually with, with adjustments to the ordinance, we usually do two readings.
Two readings, what do you mean?
Like they have a chance to look at it one month and then the next month...
That's why, that's why it's important to get it started this month.
Okay, I can try.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, moving on to the session of the youth of IRS government letter by Gates County, North Carolina, church and guy, and I believe we have a letter from a attorney as well.
I'd like to, uh, start the discussion if you will. Um, Mr. George Rogers Smith, uh, contacted me, asked me to bring before the board the, uh, request to allow the, the North Carolina, uh, church ambassadors, which is a supplemental, uh, organization to support the work of the nursing home advisory committee, uh, to bring before the board a request to utilize the government informational letter the county has, uh, so that they could apply, uh, for a nonprofit status that would allow them to receive, I believe, the donations if, uh, if citizens wanted to help support the, the work of that organization to cover some of the expenses that they had. And, uh, I presented to our county manager, who would be knowledgeable of that, uh, and to find out what, and if we had a government informational letter. And, uh, county manager found out that we did have one and did some discussions and, and, uh, and this recommendation was that, uh, that it was probably not appropriate to, uh, to utilize county informational, government informational letter for a, a subcommittee of the nursing home advisory committee. Uh, having said that, um, development was prudent that we look at all aspects of the request, possibly give, uh, uh, Mr. Smith the opportunity to help us to understand the connections, uh, of the advisory committee with the church ambassadors and look at all, uh, considerations and see if it would be feasible to do that. Obviously, this is an organization that we are bound to have in place, the advisory committee, is something that's general statute driven. Uh, I noticed in the general statute, it said that, uh, the nursing home advisory committee is to promote cooperation among the, uh, citizens of the county to get involved in, in providing somewhat of a more enhanced quality of life for the residents at the nursing home. to get involved in providing somewhat of a more enhanced quality of life for the residents at the nursing home. And one of the ways of doing that is through the Church Ambassadors. So, having said that, that's kind of a preface of where we are and how we got here. And county manager has also solicited the advice of the county attorney as well. So I'll just, I'll hold it there. County manager, if you want to.
When I was presented with this information, I did end up contacting the IRS, and I read the letter too, the, I spoke with that IRS, and she, her recommendation was based on the information that was in the letter and in the application, not to provide the IRS governmental determination letter. It is outlined in an email that I sent to you when it stated June of '15. She said while the Nursing Home Committee is a state entity and it doesn't receive funding, she said that the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors are not created by the state or the county government, and just because the Nursing Home Advisory Committee would be the officers or directors of the Church Ambassadors does not make it a direct governmental entity. She said that also, they were applying for a 501(c)(4), and she said in general that donations are not deductible as charitable contributions. And the letter that is from the IRS for the county does reference 501(c)(3). I shared that information and Mr. Smith, with Mr. Smith, Mr. Jordan, and with Ms. Hoffler. And I also contacted our county attorney, and you have before you the letter where he concurs with my decision and with the IRS.
Were there any standing grant applications that we were aware of?
For?
For this? I, I noticed that there, through that 501(c)(4), there are qualified to receive grants. So we're not aware of any that were there.
Okay, I believe the, the interpretation of Mr. Smith was that, that the cause of general statute that you have on page 115 in your, in your book. If you look at 131E dash 128A, and the last sentence, or read the, the whole paragraph A, it says, "It is the purpose of the General Assembly that community advisory committees work to maintain the intent of this park within nursing homes in this state, including nursing homes operated by hospitals licensed under article 5 of general statute 131E." And this is the sentence, "It is further, the further purpose of the General Assembly that the committees promote community involvement and cooperation with nursing homes and an inter, integration of these homes into a system of care for elderly." And the emphasis that's been related to me is that there's a charge, we as a board of commissioners gave a charge, basically to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee to fulfill the requirements of the general statute. And that requirement was, includes, promote community involvement. It seems to be a subtle requirement or a subtle type of, of task that's implemented, but it doesn't tell you how to do it to promote this community involvement, but that certainly is, is a charge. And, and the creation of the Church Ambassadors was the means in which that was being fulfilled. So, you know, based on that, the discussions with IRS, I, I certainly feel that county manager gave as much information as, as she was aware of, and county attorney has given his opinion. But I believe this is a legitimate organization to carry out that function. You know, how we assist them in doing that, one of the ways was to allow them the opportunity to use the government informational letter. If that's not feasible, I noticed in the county attorney letter that he said that, first of all, he preface this letter by saying, "This letter is written in response to the correspondence and request submitted to the county concerning the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors regarding the use of our county's IRS governmental information letter. First, let me premise my response by thoroughly endorsing and supporting the efforts of the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors, Inc., and the growing profit interest for which they desire to organize." And he goes on to say, "However being, however even with this being said, my professional legal opinion, this county's IRS identification number should not be used in this manner since the county is a separate governmental body, politic apart from the newly created Gates County Church Ambassadors, Inc., a newly created organization. It is my understanding that you have direct contact with the IRS in regards to this scenario, and they have advised that since the ambassadors were not created by the county would be operating separately from the county, that it would be best that the organization seek their own 501(c)(4) nonprofit status approval. Please feel free to share this correspondence with all parties, including our commissioners. Might I suggest that the startup fees needed for the ambassadors be obtained through donations of county businesses and citizens, as I believe the cause to be most worthy? And our office would be willing to assist the ambassadors with a financial donation in case there are costs due to the early information in their contact." I certainly was having support, allowed them to determine whether or not the government, governmental information letter is, is in support, would, would be legally usable, usable by them. But I also would support funding the cost of the ambassadors obtaining a 501(c)(3) or (c)(4) status, which I believe right now is $400. And I certainly, as one of the commissioners, would, would say to the Board that if we did not allow them to use the government informational letter, that we would make a contribution. I think if you split it up six ways, the county attorney, you're probably talking about $65, $67 apiece. And, you know, this is an organization that's trying to carry out this mandate. We have citizens that are volunteered for, and it's not an easy task. There's costs involved, and certainly any time that they can do a status raise, they can receive funding without having to report it as income. I think that's a good thing. So, you know, having said that, I would ask the Board to consider if we're not going to allow the county's governmental information letter, that we would support funding the cost for them to seek a full nonprofit status through the IRS.
Okay, yeah, I'll...
May I hear your address? Was there a particular reason that a 501(c)(3) was not considered? I know a 501(c)(4) is, is what the local Chamber of Commerce is.
Mr. Smith is here.
Mr. Smith, if you would like to touch the podium.
Good afternoon, commissioners, good afternoon, Miss Roundtree. Okay, first of all, for 501(c)(3), because the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors, Inc. is created by the board that the commissioners have appointed, that's the Community Advisory Committee for Downeys under 131E dash 128, and all of the substatutes within that particular chapter. The Secretary of State, when the application was sent in to form the organization, approved that body, the North Carolina Church Ambassadors, as an instrument of Gates County's government. Under North Carolina state law, the auditors of incorporation went straight through. I beg to differ with a fellow colleague of my profession, I am an attorney. And once you read that particular statute, what does, the statute does not allow for an instrument of government to be designated a 501(c)(3) entity. It is a social welfare organization, and the purpose of the 501(c)(3) is not for an individual to write off his or her individual donations to the organization, but it's, it's, purpose is to allow the organization to fulfill the government's purpose, which is the protection of the Bill of Rights, enhancement of the Bill of Rights of the residents who reside either at Downeys or once Gates, Gates Health comes online at Gates Health, it allows corporations to give donations, it allows the organization to seek grants. Currently, what happens, the CAC members who are the directors are there. The only person who can remove them besides God, of course, will be you as the commissioners. And you appoint individuals who make the policies which follow the law. The officers can be elected by the members of the organization. For example, I am a member, but I am not a CAC member, and I am not an officer. And I don't plan to be an officer. But some of the donations, yes, if you give a donation, a benevolent donation to a church to take care of someone's needs as specified within Ezekiel 34, and especially when you come to the New, the New Testament, and you go to the Book of Matthew, the Gospel of Matthew, and if you look at Matthew 25, if you take the, there, it states, "If you see a neighbor who is in need of clothing, you give that neighbor clothing. If you see a neighbor who is in need of medicine, you give that neighbor medicine. If you see a neighbor in need of prayer, you give that neighbor prayer." The ambassadors who are members of the Gates County Church Organization come from where? They come from the missionary outreach as specified in the Gospel, in Matthew 28, at the end of Christ's charge to his disciples. And that's exactly what the ambassadors do. They reach into their own pockets, and they support the programs which are presented to enhance the quality of life for those of us, for whatever reason, have to go into a nursing home, or who must go into adult care assisted living because our families can't take care of us, others can't take care of us, and we need that special support and encouragement. There, the letter from the Brotherhood was not provided to me. I differ with that letter.
I think that was sent to you by an email.
I have not received it. I, I've been up since 2:00 AM this morning, and I, I write something called the Deacon's Pitching Amen Quarter, which I submit to members of my church and to others throughout the communities. I looked at my email, I had a couple of hundred, I didn't see any particular one, but I did not see an email before I left this morning. But anyway, even with that, it would not have given me time to produce it whatsoever. But from what Commissioner Jordan read, there is nothing there which states that the government does not allow a delegation which is appointed by the government not to be an instrument, not to, or inform an organization which is going to support the mission. Again, the mission is the, the enhancement and the protection of the Bill of Rights of the residents who are residing at Downeys and who will resign at Gates Health. Now, as far as the current CAC is concerned, there are some other steps and procedures which have to be taken because the current CAC cannot represent, unless another action is taken, not only by the commissioners in your office, Miss Roundtree, but also by the State Department of Health and Human Services, the undersecretary. But if you look at the Internal Revenue Service regulations, they have all types of regulations which counter another regulation. Everything that you stated in the communication to me for the fifth, Miss Roundtree, I gave you a rebuttal which I sent to each commissioner. I don't know if the commissioners had an opportunity to read it, but I think you will find that my rebuttal goes into more detail than the letter from my counterpart, who's a member of this state bar. I am not a member of this state bar, I chose not to practice law in North Carolina. I'm too busy with family corporations to represent anyone else. And also, I'm too busy with my wife giving me honeydew tasks to do. But that aside, if, if you just give consideration to what I've written, and if you look at who are volunteers giving social welfare purposes. Again, a 501(c)(4) is social welfare. Those individuals usually come, and generally come, from the missionary societies within all of the churches found within this county. Thank you. I will entertain any questions if you should have any individual questions of me. It might be best for me to address your, your individual questions.
Well, I have a statement, a couple of statements that I'm going to make, and would actually direct them to our county manager.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be asking her for some information. We, we make decisions, we have things presented to us. I actually have two layers here, one's from the IRS that says not to use our tax ID. So that, that's, that's pretty high.
No, it's not, Commissioner Owens, excuse me, just one second. It's not to use the tax ID number, it's just for a government determination letter.
But anyway, I have, there's the first layer of that comes from the IRS, and then our attorney sends us this document. And I'm in favor of social health, so I, I think you don't need to believe that. But in here, so this is where I need some clarification. In Mr. Godwin's letter, one to, fourth paragraph, says that this organization was not, he says, "Was not created by the county." So I'm seeing that correctly. We have an advisory committee, that we did create.
Correct.
Okay, and then I look in here on page 115, says, "Community Advisory Committee shall be established in each county," so we've done that. Okay, and I'm not opposed to the more help and merit, so. But I just want to make sure that Mr. Godwin did put this in the letter right, that we, I mean, this is, was not created by, so we didn't appoint any of those people, right?
We did not create the ambassadors, we did not gather them together and say, "You will be the Gates County North Carolina Church Ambassadors." We created a nursing home advisory committee.
Okay.
We selected the people, excuse me, to serve, because general statutes created it.
Okay, are these the people that we selected? Are these the people that we selected in his document? Or are those, I think Aunt Howells and those people we appointed?
Aunt Howells on, I know. The ones that are on this page, which says Articles of incorporation.
Right. So we appointed every one of these people?
We appointed those. But they were on the advisory committee that has then stepped out to form the North Carolina, the Church ambassadors.
Okay. So this is an entity coming out of what we created?
Aye.
Okay. So that's where I need, where it gets.
Or new.
Right, yeah. New is about you. Those are words that is. Okay. So out of the advisory committee that we created, we appointed these people. Did it, was there, did they feel a need? Was there a need to do this in the year?
Well, there again, if you're going to promote cooperation within the community, you know, one of the things nursing homes need is they need social activities. They need coming in with singing groups and things to kind of lift them up. They need fellowship sometimes, you know, where you come in with a group and I think they, I think you all had a picnic with them not too long ago.
That's correct.
There's various activities that they bring in and sometimes I believe you all interact with them. I don't know whether you've.
That's correct.
Games that I think they, not too long ago, they had bought a television, a big screen television for the dining room.
We also purchased a popcorn machine, which they use every day.
So probably going through, so is it, would it be true that this group, this organization, Church ambassadors, are they believing that through this incorporation they'll have better access to grants? Is that.
They will have better access to grants and they will, for example, they pay tax on the television, they pay tax on the popcorn machine. They would not pay the tax, the sales tax on either item if they had utilization of that government determination letter. With that letter, the only thing you have to do is just present it. The vendors will accept it and they will write off the tax. Some vendors, when they look at the charitable contributions that they are going to make, they will, they might even give it to you because they can write it off as a contribution for charity.
Would those grants be monitored and managed by the county?
Yes, those grants will be managed and monitored within the battle halls. The treasurer has to give a monthly financial report to the county manager each month. It is mandated. The utilization of the government's letter will have to be presented to the full board, not to the ambassadors, to the full board that's appointed by you. And they will check to be sure that the purpose or the intended use falls within the structures of how the letter can be utilized.
Would those monetary donations and/or physical donations be accepted by the county and then inventoried by the county?
That is not, that is not the way it actually works. What you have, what the government mandates is that the organization operates as a nonprofit. If the organization ever should dissolve, what happens? The assets, any money, any physical equipment must first be turned over to or offered to the federal government. If the federal government accepts it, they take it all. If the federal government does not take all of it, with just a part of it, whatever is left over is then offered to the state of North Carolina. If the state takes it, should not take it, then it comes to Gates County. But because of the nature of the organization, anything that the organization purchases or is given is directly given to Down East or to Gates Health. The organization has no need for equipment. The organization holds its meetings each month at a state facility, Mergens Wilbon. If you look at the Gates County Index, in the Gates Safe, you will see Gates County, well, Church ambassadors will be listed there on a monthly basis. It's listed there currently for meeting, its next meeting is the second Thursday of each month. The meeting is listed. And the Gates County Church ambassadors meet there without a fee, not because of the Church ambassadors, but because of the CAC members, which this body, you as our Commissioners, appoint. Otherwise, they have to be charged a real fee to meet at that particular location. And they have not been joined since the organization has been in existence to support the mission of the body of Community Advisory Committee members at G.C. As a matter of fact, two Commissioners have been to some of the programs you are sitting here. Our chairman, Chairman Hoffler, and our former chairman, Commissioner Jordan.
Now, we'll enclose session today. Mr. Godwin, you present?
Yes.
You will?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, you're talking about the layers of recommendations, what to do, what not to do, that kind of thing. If Mr. Godwin were present today, I would feel much better make the decision personally after I spoke today.
Any comments or minute one? I do have some concerns. Certainly, we have a need, any help that we give to our residents in the nursing home or is certainly a wonderful gesture and certainly they need interaction. But when you were citing or reading from the general statutes, you know, everything's open to interpretation. I just don't see where the general statement that committees promote community environment cooperation, nursing homes and intended grid of these homes and the system of care for elderly, I don't see where that creates the ambassadors. But, you know, we need to talk, terminate about that. But my concern is that if we do it here, this group, we have other boards who could also come for us to want to create auxiliary organizations that we wanted. And so I think we have to make sure that we think that in the broad picture of what else could be coming down the pipe if we go forward with this, what other, what are we opening ourselves up to? And, you know, the ambassadors can exist and be helpful and the organization would, by us doing anything, I mean, you could, you would still be doing your job, you would still have this group, would you not?
As a deacon, more so than an attorney, I am obligated, not out of a sense of obligation as such, but solely as a point of love to reach out and serve my fellow men. From my profession, just taking what you said to Chairman Hoffler, the statute, no, does not say that the CAC must create an organization of Church ambassadors. What it also does not say, it does not say that it cannot. The purpose happens to be how can it best service the deeds of the fellow citizens of Gates County, North Carolina? The individuals who you appointed felt the best way to do this would be to form an organization which was 501(c)(4) so that it could reach out and bring in more resources to benefit the neighbors. Another part of the statute which has not been addressed is if the Church ambassadors get need to fill out the application to Form 1024 and submit to Internal Revenue Service, and I can guarantee you it will go through, if that's the pivot. The only thing they say or want, they do not pick up a fee for my preparing a legal document, but they have to be to $400, which will be, come out of someone's pocket on a donation basis. Let's say that the CAC members do as they did with the application, the $60 to the Secretary of State, the form to get the implementation job. If they do that, the statute 131E-128, subparagraph G, your CAC does not receive a stipend. They can't. But they can submit to U.S. Commissioners the bill for $400 so that they can be reimbursed for fees that they incur doing their jobs, community service. And the logic of the committee that I chaired, and I didn't even know a government letter as such, came out to the point, why should the county pick up an expense when it does not need to pick up any expense whatsoever? You have a letter that's in your possession. The purpose of the letter is to serve those seniors within this county and disabled individuals as well, who must reside in a nursing home or who must reside at Gates Health, assisted adults assisted limit. So why spend the money if you have a letter and there are strict mandates on the utilization of that letter? Strict mandates. The CAC members report to whom? They report to the state and they report to you. If you find someone misusing, you can not only strike them from the board, but you can also put them in jail.
But that doesn't, you know, when the, as Commissioner Orrin said, when you have the IRS, your attorney advising us not to, I think you have to listen.
I'm an attorney also, and I advise you to.
But you have a predisposition to look at it one way.
No.
How is this going to help you?
No, it does not help me. I have, I have a very difficult taskmaster. As a matter of fact, you seem to be dressed like this because I have to go out and work in the God when I, once I leave here. But that being aside, the situation happens to be, I receive no monetary benefit whatsoever for doing anything for Down East or for Gates Health. As a matter of fact, it costs me to do anything for either organization. It costs me dearly. If I could submit my bills to you, believe me, I would. It costs me a couple of hundred dollars each month just to do voluntary service. And most people here who know me, you will basically find me one place that's at home or in church or dealing with the Gates County ambassadors. I receive no benefit. The benefits that I receive will come from God. They will not come from anyone in this, in this board.
Madam Chairman, there are names on here of people that we appointed to the advisory committee. So I believe we need to give more due diligence to it. I know that my fellow colleagues here want to be helpful.
Thank you.
Benefit our citizens. I would, I would ask that we table the matter for now and address it in closed session with our attorney.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's a motion.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to be made. And second is that we table this consideration of the use of the IRS, Gates County Church ambassadors. All that, any additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Table that. And we move on to item 14, organizational restructure.
There are three recommendations. The first is that customer service become its own department. Currently, they are housed under finance, but over the past year, that department has also grown. Customer service would be comprised of the customer service department head, two customer service representatives, and three meter readers. The second recommendation is that customer service department collect fees and fines for water, landfill, developmental services, planning and zoning gift, the Department of Social Services, Department of Extension, Register of Deeds, and Sheriff's Department. And they will also receive all funding that comes into financial services. Taxes will be collected by the tax department. Diane Hendricks and Kathy Lane are in agreement with this recommendation. Allow the tax department to collect taxes will assist them in communicating with those that owe taxes. Each department head will oversee their respective staff to ensure transactions are being properly handled. There will be interdepartmental agreement between customer service and tax concerning assistance as needed between the two departments. And the third recommendation is simply a name change, to change developmental services to inspections. That's what most departments, let's call that department anyway.
Ladies and gentlemen, I make a motion that we accept your kind of manly recommendation.
If I could, please.
Appreciate the opportunity. I'll agree. I just want to echo what Natalie said regarding the taking tax payments back within the tax office. I agree with every part of recommendation number two, except the last sentence. That is to say, the interdepartmental assistance between customer service and tax. An email last week when I received, just had a chance to review it. Natalie said if we had any comments, she'd be back after. I submitted those in the email mentioning that I would be speaking today. If each department is fully staffed, customer service and tax, mail payments for the water department are now going to Pennsylvania. There is less of a burden, that's true. Why would there be assistance among departments, in other words? I mean, you know, we, not more than 30 feet down the hall, if there is a reorganization in place, there's also a mention of a move for the tax department. You know, we already have our shingle set up, not more than 30 feet down the hallway. All we need is a tax safe. And we're ready to run with that. We want to take tax payments back. We want that interaction. You know, we want to be in a space, I had an opportunity on Friday afternoon, Friday morning, Heather took tour, the so-called space that is still up for debate, there was then some construction, potential mention of that. We're comfortable, we have the space that we utilize now for the tax department. And I just would want to, you know, echo any comments that if we do move, why move? We've got the space now that's suitable with printers, is functional. So I know that's kind of tailed into the comment of us taking back tax payments.
I want to address that. Kathy and I did briefly discuss this. Payroll and finance are all shared in office. They have also very sensitive issues that are being overheard by people who are paying water bills. Marie Roundtree has come in on the weekend in order to get caught up on her work because of the interruptions that take place between sharing in office with Marie, I mean, with Ms. Fitman, because people are constantly in and out. We also feel that if tax moves up to the current space that is occupied by finance and Melissa and I, then that would create more of a one-stop shop. People could stop, they pay tax on one side, they pay water on the other, they don't have to walk down the hallway. Of course, them taking the tax payment would alleviate people going, "Why, I don't want to walk down the hallway," even though, like she said, it's only 30 feet or so down. Because that is an issue that we currently have. People come up, they'll say, "I'm going to pay my taxes." They'll pay.
They'll pay, customer service say, well, you need to go talk to the tax office about an issue. Okay, I will, and they walk right out that front door. Them taking all taxes would alleviate that problem, we are hoping. But we also hope to be more customer friendly. If they move up front, people pay every fee that we have for the county in that one area. It would also help finance with keeping some of their private things private until we finish renovations on the courthouse, and then we can talk about how we will divide offices and rearrange at that time.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
This is not anything that you, you said, whatever, just want to be on record. Is your space now adequate?
Without doubt. Why move? I have a concern with, yes, sir.
Well, I was just curious, it is adequate then?
Yes, sir. We would, and, you know, speaking with my staff, why would we move? All we need is, I feel if we move up front, that's going to add to the congestion, not to mention the redesign of an existing counter and glass that's already in place that would have to be redone. We already have that down the hall, so I have concerns about that. In a budget year, when we, within departments, were struggling, we were conservative, why spend that money on that? We are already set up down the hall, so. I would invite the commissioners to come through, tour, tour the space, take a look, gather your own opinion. Please do that. I just, you know, I appreciate any input with that.
And one, and one other thing, we did discuss, the reason I had put in there about the interdepartmental agreement, if the great flu were to hit and there's one person in each department, they're going to need backup. So that is why I'm recommending there be an interdepartmental agreement that says if there's only one person in the water, I mean, customer service taking water, or there's only one person in tax office that day, someone else can go and help and assist so that they're not with every customer who comes in.
And I'm sure this is like, you would be willing to walk away in, in a scenario as a county manager as just presented?
I would, yes, ma'am, but I would, I would also have some concerns that I've seen that perhaps need to be addressed in a closed session. If we, if we need to get to that point, now I'll just say that.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd, I'd like to first say that, you know, we're talking to basic agencies here. The board commissioners appointed hires the tax administrator as county manager, they're two separate, that department is run by the tax administrator. And county manager certainly, all recommendations, she brings the board, she's overall, she's overall, oversights everything over the county, but certainly, these are recommendations. We have to, this is the one that we appointed to take care of that agency duty. And when we first made our reorganization and bought everything over here to where it is now, Mr., the name of Guinness was in charge of the tax department, there were reservations at that time. And we put the tax department through some rigorous changes and accommodated them with what they felt they needed and made those changes, and now we're at this situation again. The customer service department was created to be a self-sufficient entity, basically, they felt they could handle the finances, and we took it away from the tax department. So I, I, I vigorously emphasize that, let's give due considerations, that we're not dealing with recommendations yet, that should, you know, arbitrarily be considered, what should happen to the tax department because that tax administrator is, is over that tax department. And the laws that, that she works by protects that system, because we're ultimately responsible for all taxes that are collected in the town county, and certainly we want that department to be run in such a manner that certainly she has what she needs to do her job.
And these recommendations is not anything about changing offices?
I realize that.
That's a separate issue.
I, I realize that, yes, ma'am, sir.
So that should not be on the table?
Yes, I understand completely, yes, ma'am.
Let me just also say, my question about hearing you say whether the space was adequate or not, Henry just brought up a topic there. Once upon a time, we had a resignation attendant to the board saying that space was not adequate for that department, so I just wanted to, wanted to hear that. So that's the reason I asked you.
Yes, yes, sir.
I think that will have that played into your concern. Madam Chairman, we have.
A motion on the floor.
And, and along with Mr. Felton, Mr. Felton, I was probably prepared to, to vote in favor of approving the recommendation, but I believe, from my viewpoint, I believe I need to hear from the county manager on the matter before I'm prepared to vote, and I'm not prepared to hear from her now. But, but I, I think I need a little bit more information.
I, I agree with you. When I made the motion, I've been thankful, I didn't, I said, I made that motion that I was not aware of and not even known, so I'd be fully in favor of just sending that motion until after.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to table this motion?
Madam Chairman, I would, we table the motion to, to the night meeting, get the opportunity to speak one-on-one with county manager. I make that form a motion to table that for next meeting.
Okay, a motion has been made to table. Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Second, a motion has been made to table these recommendations to the night meeting on the July 20th, in a favorable discussion. But we're going to, this is, the recommendations are not anything to do with changing offices, it's just strictly what's on this paper.
And maybe we have the opportunity to view those recommendations, physically view them.
Okay. Okay.
As far as the county department would agree that they would like.
That has not been finalized, that was something that we felt like the departments could handle, which would basically cover, you know, if there was someone, if there was one person in an office and someone needed help, what would the other department, department be willing to do? Would they be willing to take a tax payment necessary? Would they be willing to send someone up to help cover for a launch shield? That sort of thing.
Just.
Right, the daily.
Or if there was a huge line.
If there were 50 people standing to take taxes.
Right now, because they're getting into the year for a lot of times, there's a line, and Jalen got into the year for taxes. Okay, so a motion has been made, a second, any additional discussion? All those in favor of table the motion until a night meeting on July 20th, by reorganization of the county departments, if that is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion is tabled. We have a letter from the head of the Economic Improvement Council requesting a waiver of the fees when they are doing work in the county for weatherization.
Specifically for insulation.
I could read this letter, this had I helped come in?
Go ahead, please.
I could read this letter, I did contact a commissioner in Sherwin County about what they did about inspections and fees with the EIC. They were supposed to get back with me and I have, couldn't, can't check their phone in here, but anyway. But he did say, even if you waiver fees, do not waiver the inspections. He said, you know, you've been down that road, you said, we went down that road, you got caught up in problems that if the fees are waived, the inspections cannot be waived, that people would have to inspect because we are fed.
That's, that's a good.
So, but like I say, I have not heard back that he was going to call and just check before.
The director of EIC gave him a call and asked if it would be possible to, to have the fees waived because the funds that they get are specified for specific citizens of the county who qualify to receive those services, and the more dollars they can stretch, the more people they can help. I told him I was not aware, I know, I know we waive fees for the housing committee, we did that some years ago, that was, you know, the benevolent service for citizens of the county. And I checked with Edgar and I talked with Melissa, and we didn't have anything that algebra that we could find that would give a blanket waiver to the various organizations of this type that provided services to our senior citizens and many of the low-income citizens of the county. So Melissa, I guess you talked with the director, and he submitted this letter, and you have it before you, he says, greetings from the Economic Improvement Council, I'm writing this letter to explain, explain briefly about the weatherization assistance program, and he asks for your approval to waive the installation permit fees. EIC is a, is a weatherization service provider under the North Carolina Weatherization Assistance Program. Funds are provided to us on a yearly basis to provide energy upgrades and energy improvement services to income-eligible persons in a ten-county service area in the northern coastal region of North Carolina. Our service area stretches inland to include Gates County. We provide such services as air sealing to reduce air infiltration and improve indoor air quality, insulation of attics, floors, and/or walls to create or improve the thermal boundary, evaluation of powerback systems to ensure their energy efficient operation, and more. All of these services are provided for income-eligible clients completely free of charge. Income eligibility is achieved by being at or below 200% of the federal policy guideline. These services are free of charge to eligible persons, and EIC is a nonprofit community action agency doing business to aid individuals. We have weatherized five homes in Gates County for fiscal year 2014-15, spending over $26,883.47 to ensure homes are energy efficient. As it stands, we are required to obtain a building permit for the purpose of installation, installing insulation. I'm asking to waive the cost to secure your building permit. Please consider carefully this request, please respond favorably. If you have any questions, please contact Dr. Mason. So that basically explains why I should ask. I certainly, generally, would be in favor of making a motion to approve a waiver with the understanding that the inspectors would perform on the residents once the installations are done.
Okay, a motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second. Not that I really care if I fall in line with everybody else, but do we have a feeling that all nine counties here?
Well, like I say, I spoke to the, the chair of Sherwin County, and he was going to get back with me, and like I say, I haven't looked at him, I think.
How would we, who would actually be pulling the permit? EIC or a person doing the work? The person going to work on their, their work order on the county? Would our inspection department have something on, would they, how would they know?
I don't know. I know at one time, EIC had a weatherization group, but because some of those ones have disappeared, and they've let some of those people go. I know they have one person who was in charge of the weatherization program, but I do not believe he does any of the work, so I'm like Mr. Jordan, I think they contract that work out there, but I do not know how.
Would it be important to have a stamp that said, EIC-approved project or something?
That might get them to fail inspection as well.
Well, would they still be required to come in and fill out the paperwork? They'd still be required to come and fill out paperwork, and just not pay the fee? And the only way they would, I would assume they would know they didn't have to pay the fee is if EIC told them, or if they wrote a letter perhaps from EIC, from Jason Barnes, whom I believe is still over there, that says, this is what needs to be done at this house, and this is the person doing it.
I would, if, if somebody came in and said, oh, by the way, I'm permit-free, cost wise, I have to have the permit, but I don't have to pay the fee, I would be inclined to say that Edgar's office should say, do you have your document from EIC?
And I think they need to do it, the application said that they know.
I, I think it should be a separate letter or form, Natalie, I think, with Mason's signature or the appropriate signature. I don't want to add to what they're doing, but they need something to cover themselves.
And we would need to pay the work for the inspection department, that this work is going to be done, so they would know to go out there and inspect.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to charge our county manager to find an appropriate manager to address it without a motion necessarily. Maybe get back to us what you know to do.
Okay, because there was a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion that's been properly signed to waive the fee, permit fee, but not the inspection. And I guess we could then direct, like we take our vote, the county manager to get the proper procedure or protocol.
Sure.
Okay, is any of this a question?
I'd get back to you the same thing, but it'd be, it'd be kind of bad if we, for I'd be the only one in the 10 that I was there, so we're not required, I don't have the call, I don't.
I don't think it'd be a time, time to denigrate, it'd be a policy on us. But that'd be a good point, but. Somebody has to leave first, don't they?
Well, certainly, I know funds have been cut dramatically on all these programs. Well, we could go ahead and pass it and then see how it works out. We can always rescind it later date.
Well, our citizens benefited to the change of $26,883. And just five residents, so that those five permit fees are not going to break us, and we're helping, helping our fellow citizens, helping our county.
And like I say, I did try, but I have not heard. Okay, all those, any more comments before we vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and a directive to our county manager to work out the protocol. Okay, any other new business? Okay, citizen comments? Well, we have made this. Okay, excuse, Ms. George, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin, for letting me speak. I apologize, I was probably speaking out of turn, or I could, that might be. I apologize if I'm speaking too late at this point with referencing your comments to the, the solar farms and the ordinances earlier. I come to you, I try not to get emotional, as concerned, as a citizen. I live across from the 1500 EIC proposed project. I know most of my comments will be more properly addressed to the Board of Adjustments, and I've been in contact with them, and will continue to be, I'm a public here. But as far as what you brought up about our ordinances, I think there's some other things that we need to strengthen, not only the decommission plan or what to do at the end of that youthful length of the form, but there are also ordinances that reference the buffers, apologize. With the degree in horticulture, I realize that these are inadequate for technical citizens, obviously unadvised, but we see what's been going up on one fifty-eight and I don't know. That's something I think that we should strengthen. I know this takes time. And I discussed earlier. But I think that's something that could be strengthened. As you've seen, if you look at a mechanic's junkyard or a scrapyard, you can see where these ordinances, similar ordinances have been put in place here in Gates County. Where you have to plant a screen to protect the right-of-way, the viewpoint. I would ask you adequately, does that screen your view? It does not. You put in something, and these are, they're going to understand the point of the invasive ordinances. I think that's important so that she can have some flexibility. And like I say, some of this may be more appropriate for the Board of Adjustments in each particular case, but I think it could be strengthened to some degree. A fifty-foot planted buffer, what does that mean? Planted grass? Strawberry, what does that mean? Except that the roadway frunge, sorry, you're saying that the only point that this is going to bother a resident is along the roadway frunge? If you look at the proposed map for the project, it's on board now, there's very little roadway frunge, but you can see it from Free Roads, Bosley, Akron Hill, and Sugar Room. And from several properties, you know, you can see, you'll be able to see that size of a project. So I just ask that, you know, is there a possibility that we could, as Ms. Baptiste is looking into strengthening our ordinances, is that something that could be addressed? And also with the time that this is going to take and with the magnitude of that project on the table right now, being fifteen hundred acres, or in truth, it's over a thousand acres in panels, a fifteen-hundred acre tract. Of course, I would suspect they're going to clearcut that entire thing. If you're not familiar with the property, it's in managed timberland. And as I heard one commissioner mention earlier, we already, a county that worked timber industry, very important. And I think that's the issue that we need to be aware of with that project going forward. And already on the table one time, I understand for Ms. Baptiste, I don't think it can be tabled again. But what concessions are there if you're looking at the ordinances and revising them and this might take some time? Will that project be grandfathered in to the ordinances they are? Or is there some way to hold them to the new standards? I would ask that you look at that and like I said, I have so much more I could tell you about the project. I won't, I won't fly you with that today. I know it's more appropriate for the Board of Adjustments, but as Ms. Baptiste said, all of these solar farms are special use permits. And if you look at the definition in our ordinance as a special use permit and what that means, I mean, just as it sounds, the land is not normally zoned for that, but concessions can be made if it is deemed beneficial. Specifically, an article that says that they're allowed for flexibility, subject to high standards of planning and design. So when does that high planning, those high standards of planning and design, when does that take place? I've seen it takes place at that Board of Adjustment meeting. There's not a lot that can get done in a meeting like that. I reviewed past minutes of previous solar farms that are in construction at this time. Some meetings were concluded in forty minutes. So, and not to fault the board, I think they've done, you know, the job that they were tasked with. And you can only do so much with whatever citizens come forward and the education that you have, but you're making a twenty-to-thirty-year decision in forty minutes. So I think that's another reason it's important to strengthen the ordinances that we have now and to hold all future projects to these ordinances. When you go to one of these public hearings, you have any concerned citizens that show up and then you have representatives of the solar company. And as you may know, at work for extension, we pride ourselves in being a source of unbiased information. When you go to that public hearing, there's no source of unbiased information. As I referenced, the presentation from NC State, I was not there for that presentation, but I have reviewed that PowerPoint. And I encourage you all to review that information. I think there's a lot about solar farms in this county and Pashtun County probably tell you that they did not realize at first and have been sort of blindsided with. And so I think it's important to get more education out there. For instance, if that hearing had gone forward last week, the applicant made that, their application for that permit stating, you know, pending whatever reports come back from NC Dean or an onboard engineers. Obviously, we know there's a lot of wetlands in this county. My understanding with the solar farm that's going forth behind the John Air Force Home at this time, that there was a huge issue there where they logged into wetlands. And I now is to understand, but this morning, that it was not where they knew it was wetlands and they just went ahead and cut it, it's cut, it's done. But they, I guess they had their permits in line and they went forward and they cut before they ever called onboard engineers to even look at the site. And so if our plan board can move forward and give permits, are we enabling this? That they can move forward and start taking action when we don't even have the determinations yet from the other agencies, it would be important. So, I throw all that at you, just like I said, the main points I think we need to strengthen our ordinances, not only in what happens twenty years down the road when the farm is no longer usable with the equipment, but also in the protections of the buffers. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at. And you can certainly reference the extension officer or the resources, not myself in particular, but we do have a residential horticulture agent and she works strongly with Chalil and several of their projects and town projects in determining the plant uses and plant needs. And I would ask you if there's some way to, or you can probably tell me, if these projects that are going on down in the future will be grandfathered or they'll be held to any de-ordinances that y'all would work on.
Okay, she lives across, you live across the road from the proposed site.
Yes, I live across the road from the currently proposed project. And this company, that's another thing, the biology of this company is not a local landlord. I'm not opposed to the Gates County citizens making money off their property. I'm not opposed to solar energy. But this company, and this is the largest tract, would be the largest solar farm in town to this point. And they are a timber company out of New Hampshire. So no individual citizen wants to benefit. I would be interested, of course, to weigh the numbers with Kathy in the tax office and see, you know, where the true county benefit is. I know there could be some, but I thought there should be limitations on a project of that magnitude.
How many acres do you own right there?
I only own three.
Excuse me?
I only own three.
Is it one, just one parcel?
Yes, sir.
Three acres?
Yes, I own one, about forty-some. Of me or of the farm?
Of yours.
Three forty-five, about zero.
So they are from the right-hand side of the road?
I would appreciate it. There are, I'm not sure with Ms. Baptiste, and I believe she, you can pull a record from her. She'll have to go to the GI system and look it up, there are forty-some landowners that property. And like I said, if you, if you travel, if you were able to get through the lock gate and you traveled through that proposed property, the panels would be visible, you know, of course, pending on court report and the dean of report, if they stuck to that, those panels would be visible by three rays.
I just like to say, you know, the ordinance that we've come up with, all of the requirements may or may not be able to be retroactively implemented. Obviously, you know, they're moving forward with construction now, we probably wouldn't make them redo something. But anything that certainly put in there that catches the board and doesn't or prevents them from doing, adding or doing something against the ordinance, certainly that would be effective. I would, I would mention safe at this point, but.
And we could, the Board of Adjustments could make conditions. If I, what Ms. Baptiste said?
Yes.
That she, that they could, even before it was ordinance, that they could put conditions on projects because they had some special use permit. It's not, that's not understanding. That they had the authority to do that. If we had something pending, which they have the right to appeal, but.
Yes.
But they had to go to spirit.
Also, the number of, or any ordinance that approved by this board, that would be a public hearing and I would highly encourage you to come and make your statement with that.
And Madam Chair, that is mine too, Mr. Felton, that during your research analysis, did you see any problems, dangers that you were aware of from the county where, through that analysis?
It's as far as what sort of, what are you referencing?
The solar farm itself and the buffer in zone.
Well, no physical dangers. In this particular property, if they clearcut fifteen hundred acres, I mean, there is certainly the concern of the wildlife displacement and being a area of rattlesnakes and other things. And devaluing my, my room property, you know, if I should want to sell, and certainly as a consideration, if I had to look at this for thirty years. If we're doing this to benefit, this is special use and it's supposed to benefit the county, you know, what is the benefit to the surrounding citizens? There's been some misconceptions as to benefit as far as power bills and things like that. It's not going to decrease our power bill and in fact, it may even increase the power bill because they are selling that green energy, that solar energy to a power company, so they're having to pay for that. Those are just a few things that are, that are concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. George, for your comments and certainly I think we all need to get education about this. This is becoming very popular. To make sure that we're looking out for the needs of all of our citizens.
Thank you for your time, Jennifer, for your summary.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll go on to the commissioners' comments very quickly. In fact, all of those who have stayed right to the bitter end, I thank Libra and Mrs. Beasley and.
That contentious, too.
Oh, that contentious, over there. I'd say, I know the day is July first and a few days we celebrate our nation's birthday. I have hope and pause and thank about the sacrifices that so many people have made so that we can be here today, doing your work, you know, citizens' work and trying to make this country that lives up to thy preamble in the Declaration of Independence, that all people are created equal, all have inevitable rights, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We are not a perfect nation, as we all know, but hopefully we're striving to get better each and every day and to be there to help all of our citizens. Thank you for coming.
Again, thank you for coming and appreciate your participation. And Ms. George, thank you for bringing our attention to the solar farm industry. It is becoming very popular. I see it on the road everywhere I go. Thank you everyone for being here.
I too thank everyone for being here, those who left. Thank you for coming to be in part of the commissioners' meeting. We had a lot of discussions today. There were some decisions that had been made that had required a lot of thought and research. I'd like to thank the board for looking into these matters. You know, a lot of times we're commissioners. We come before the board, but it takes some preparation before we begin here. And in order to be able to make a county decision, that's going to be a benefit to the county. So, thank you for entrusting your trust in us and hopefully we'll continue to prove and do what we've been elected to do.
I too thank everybody for coming this morning and I reiterate Kim and Hopple's comments of about the Fourth of July, we sometimes pass over and take things for granted. But not every people on earth can celebrate freely and come into a courtroom like this and sit here like fear. And just, just hope everybody will stop and take, take a few minutes and realize what that freedom that we have has caused a generation before us and still generations fighting for us land.
Very well put. Would be amiss if I did not mention that how all of us are proud of this county, we're proud of the citizens. But also very proud of our county employees. We have an opportunity to look at things. Me, being involved in one department, had no idea all the things that go along and and how hard these county employees work for you and work for citizens. Appreciate the work the county manager's done and continues to do. Also, I, with phone calls that we get, won't call them complaints, but at least discussions about what does go on in the county. Our educational system is important to us, to all of us. And our schools and teachers are very important to us and remain of way. So with that, happy Fourth of July coming up to you.
And I just like to make one comment. I was reading totally with Commissioner Jordan. We've had lively discussions and I think that is good for all of us. We come from different viewpoints and I think listening to each other, sometimes my opinions change as I listen to all of my commissioners. Hopefully I can change theirs sometimes too. But, you know, I think that makes for a good board. And, you know, sometimes we agree to disagree as well. But anyway, we enjoy working together and all of us are working for the government of the county. Okay, saying that, we are going to enter into closed session. Closed session in pursuit of these, we'll come on to statutes one four three, that's three one eight, eleven, concerning legal, do not develop personnel. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Seven.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will take a break here before we enter closed session. I mean, before we get down to the closed session. We'll start up again in maybe ten, fifteen minutes. I hate to hold you up, but.
They have a meeting after this.
We have a meeting after this, so we're going to grab just a snack and we'll be back. Do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Motion's been made, is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, one motion for consideration is that the board accepts a recommendation of the county manager, the county attorney, in accordance with IRS funding, concerning the church ambassadors, however alternative means will be considered. Do I have a, that is a motion that you consider, do I have a, who will make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made, is seconded, the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, do I hear a motion to, have we adjourned this? No, we're going to recess. Do I have a motion to go and recess until July twentieth meeting?
So moved. Second.
A motion's been made, is seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we're in recess for about.